Good evening, welcome to the Joplin Schools Board of Education meeting for July 22nd. Happy anniversary to, no, happy birthday to Mr. Landis' wife, Brandy.
It's today, today?
Happens from time to time.
Seems like his anniversary was today.
Roll call.
Uh, Dr. Ford.
Here.
Ms. Van Worf is upset, Ms. Stifler.
Here.
Mr. Steele.
Here.
Mr. Landis.
Present.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Here.
Ms. Sharp.
Present.
Thank you. Please stand for the Fledges Legions, please.
Our Fledges Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kimbrough, seconded by Mr. Steele. Any questions? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Board Presidents Report. We're going to have a presentation, I don't know the State Auditor's name, or if they're here.
Yep, they're here.
Okay.
Come on up. Um, let's, uh, we got a microphone set up up there if you want to visit.
Right over.
Yeah, me right here, right?
That'll work too.
Yeah, it works. Do you even stand or sit, sir?
I prefer to sit.
Sit right here, right here.
Got a place for you. There you go.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Okay. As I mentioned, my name is Kelly Davis, I'm with the Missouri State Auditor's Office, I'm the Audit Manager.
Yeah, you want to have that closer.
Okay. I'm an Audit Manager with the State Auditor's Office, and we are here today to entrance our audit of the Joplin School District. Joining me also is Bob MacArthur, who will be handling the job onsite for us. We are auditing the school district in accordance with our statute, which is Section 29.205. As such, the audit will be paid for by the state and not the district, so we will be covering the cost of it, there will be no cost to the district. Generally, what I try to do at these meetings is explain the process of the audit. It covers in about three phases, which is the entrance conference, which is what we're doing tonight, and we previously met with the Superintendent and some of the Superintendent staff about the audit in June. And then, we have our fieldwork portion of the audit. During this stage is when we're reviewing school records, procedures, and speaking with school officials, and anyone else who wants to provide input into the audit. We started requesting documents about three weeks ago, and we've been provided some of those, and then we began onsite yesterday with my crew here. The objectives of the audit will be to review internal controls over significant management and financial functions, compliance with certain legal provisions, and the economy and efficiency of certain management practices, those are our standard objectives for our audits. Our audit period, we will be focusing on the most recent year, so the year ending June 30, 2014. While we are focusing, that will be our audit period, we will consider going further back for transactions, and any time while we're currently here, we'll also review that process. We will also consider any of the CPA audits that have been conducted in the last few years, or any other work by auditors, to prevent any duplication of effort, and to kind of see if they can help us guide our work, any of their findings. At the end of the fieldwork stage, we will share our findings with district management and with the Board in closed session. We refer this as our pre-exit conference, and during the pre-exit conference, this is the opportunity for the district to provide us any additional information about any of our possible findings, and address any issues that we find. After this, is when we begin preparing our final report, and that's the third phase of the audit, which is the reporting stage. We prepare a written draft of the report, which includes all of our findings and recommendations. The draft is reviewed by myself and a Director before we bring it to the Board again in closed session, and at that time, we call that our exit conference, and this session is to ensure the draft is correct, any errors or any other additional information, again, we ask for that at that time, and to obtain the Board's written responses, which will be included in the draft, in the final report, as part of the written product. The Board's responses, again, like I said, well, are in after the recommendations in the report, so that's how we draft it, so that it shows our findings, our recommendation, and then the Board responds for each of the findings. The report is then reviewed by the State Auditor, and after that, it becomes final and released to the public on our website, and usually in some sort of press release also that we can make public. One of the things that we like to ask is that if anyone is interested in providing us, and this includes Board members, the public, district personnel, any information regarding the audit, they can call us at our 800 number, which is 1-800-347-8597, it's a toll-free number, and the information's up there also, and, um, all of my contact information is up there. Anything you want to know about how to get ahold of me, through either our 800 number, or we have a, an email address called Mo Audit, which comes in confidential, but the information will just basically, it'll come to me, so if you want to email or call me directly, that's also.
Well, folks, listen to her, that one.
Well, they, they made this very lovely slide, so you should also look at the very lovely slide for me. Are there any questions?
When you present to the Board, is there a time limit then of those findings, that we would respond to those?
We like to get them as soon as possible, we generally provide the Board a draft copy before that final meeting, so you can kind of be working on our, the responses at the time, and then we give you usually a few weeks to work them out, to try to get a final draft, because what we will do is then we'll take those back, and they also, they go, they're now reviewed by me and the Director again, and so we kind of review those responses and make sure everything's.
And Kelly, as far as process is concerned, you're, obviously you're housed in this, this building, we found some space downstairs.
Yes, I thought it was nice.
We're full of auders, we also have our, our local auditor in-house too, working, starting now, but as far as any findings, any concerns, any questions you have, working closely with Paul Barr's office, getting some answers early, there, when we get to that point, I don't, I understand that there won't be any really surprises at that point, we'll, there'll be full disclosure throughout, we'll be having conversations as we, as we answer questions and get information from them and respond, so it's a pretty, pretty seamless process overall, it sounds like.
Generally, yeah, we'll, we'll try to communicate as we go along, and, and that also gives us the opportunity to say, this is what we're seeing, where are we not looking, is there any additional information you want to provide us, so we can also make sure to take care of that, before it gets to the end in the written process.
Kelly, how many of these do you guys do a year?
School districts?
Mm-hmm.
It depends on the year, this year we have done Ash Grove, we're currently in the process of doing St. Joseph's School District, Hickman Mills, we just completed, Grandview we're in the process, so four or five, I mean, we, we've, the statute that allows us to do school districts only changed in the last couple of years, that allowed us to do them under our own authority, rather than the petition process where the public asked us to, so the number of school districts has increased without authority, because the petition process is a little more complicated getting.
And could you cover briefly, and we talked a little bit about in our meeting, the grading system that's, that's in place, and what that looks like?
Yes, along with all of our reports is a, a rating system, it's issued with the final draft of the report, there are four, it is excellent, good, fair, and poor. Excellent generally is no findings, the whole, the, I didn't print it off, but the actual definitions is on our website if anybody is interested in, in reviewing it. Good is maybe findings, but the district is addressing them. The rating lowers as we find that the district, or the auditee, not just the district, has not implemented, or is not working to implement, or has not addressed certain things, so those are some of the issues, and the number of findings, and the severity of the findings. And so that is, again, it comes out with the final report, it's, it's said on there, and then that can kind of guide whether we do a follow-up report. Under Auditor Schweick, he's implemented a procedure where we go back into our auditees if they receive a fair, or sometimes a fair, or a poor, so we can get within 90 days to maybe six months, an idea of what the current status is, and so, it's intended to help our auditees show that they're making progress, but that's only, again, if it receives that rating, and their findings are severe enough that we think they need to be followed up on.
And how is this different from our annual audits that we have done?
That is an audit, correct me, I mean, is to address the financial statements strictly, and the fairness of the presentation of the financial statements. We will look more at management practices, policies, procedures, they look at controls, and we'll look at controls, but that's kind of some of the areas that we try to not overlap in cases.
Okay.
But those are strictly on the numbers and the presentation of the financial statements, where we will look more at practices and procedures.
And what governing body oversees that, so, I mean, is that like MSBA that we get our policies from?
Oh, for my policies, yes.
Yes, and we will, so, we, you, okay.
Well, by statute, we're only required to do an audit every, every other year.
We do it every year.
And, we do it every year, and a lot of school districts do do that, we're not, we're not an exception of that rule. And, and I think it's also important to note that this, this audit process is something that we, we kind of initiated, we started having conversations, the State Auditor was, Auditor Schweick was down here, gosh, I think it was in July, August, September, after the storm, and had visited with Paul about coming down to do an audit at some point, just because of the mass volume of, of donations we received, and that standard practice, and, and so, when we got the call that, that a petition had been started related to that, we were able to give the State Auditor's Office a call, and they were very willing to, you know, move forward with what they'd originally intended to do anyway, which we appreciate very much.
Yes, thank you.
So then you've worked familiar with MSBA and their policies to know?
Yes, yes, and we will review your work as it complies with those policies, and when we look at compliance, that is one of the things, and then the sufficiency of those policies to guide what you're doing also, and clarity of those policies and how they work, but that's when we look at compliance, we look at statutes and also policy compliance.
Excellent. Thank you, because a lot of times when you hear audit, to most of us, well, to me, it just may, and I don't know how to differentiate one from the other, so it seems redundant, so that explains a lot, so thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Ms. Davis? Have you, have you met the rest of our leadership team, Mrs., well, my, my Board members first, have you met my Board members? Mr. Steele?
Hi.
They have their names in front of them, Ms. Stifler.
I was in the first meeting.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Hi.
Welcome.
Dr. Ford, and then the rest of our team is Tina Smith, and Jennifer Dozier, Mark Barless, Jason Cravens, that's one of you, and then Eric is our awesome tech guy, and Pat can do, Pat Waldo can do anything.
And I think you're working directly mostly with Susan Smith, I think downstairs.
But that's why I asked him to sit up there, you have some faces and names, so if you guys don't want to be embarrassed anymore, feel free to.
I wondered why they were there. I was like, are they? They're eager.
I know, I know Ms. Dozier has a presentation here in a bit, but if you guys want to step back, that's fine.
Now, how many of you, you're going to have, you have a team here, or?
We do have a team, it'll be Bob, and then right now we have two other staff people here, we'll probably get one more, so we'll have two to three onsite for most of it.
They work a four-day week, 10-hour days, is that right?
Yes, exactly.
So typically, we won't be here on Fridays.
Right, unless we adjust for holidays or something.
I usually don't work Fridays either.
I'd like to say that.
It helps us with our travel schedules and trying to get, get people down here, so.
We have provided Kelly an organization chart to help her and her team get around, and phone numbers for all the schools, and we've discussed at leadership meetings in the last few weeks about the differences in our financial audit done by the local firm versus this audit, which will, as Kelly mentioned, will deal with some finances, but it will go out to operations and very broadly, so our leadership team is understanding of that, and is willing to participate and cooperate, you know, with your team on information flow, and know that, know that we'll be looked at in ways our operations that we haven't been looked at historically, because we haven't had a state audit, and I'm not sure if we ever have had one, but we do appreciate the opportunity to work with your team, and let us know what we can do along the way to help things, information flow.
We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Joplin Schools. Go Eagles and Joplin.
I guess I'm up. I think we're ready for our construction update.
I'd like to go ahead and give us more since she's sitting there.
We could. Hold on a second.
Never mind.
We're going to, we're going to have Ms. Dozier start first with a presentation on district literacy data, since, since she's here, and we'll get after that, so we got some good, good news to share, appreciate the work that's gone on, as this board knows, over the last couple of years, we've been working on developing our strategic plan, long-range strategic plan, and one of the areas that we've been focused on, obviously, is literacy, and we established a pretty aggressive benchmark, five-year benchmark to get 90% of our kids reading at the proficient or advanced level on our local assessments, being the SRI. We are looking specifically at grades five and eight, those are our transition years, going from fifth grade to sixth grade, making sure that we're sending kids to the middle school that are reading on grade level, and looking at that eighth, ninth grade transition as well, so tonight we have some data that we'd like to share with the Board, kind of a follow-up to our work session meeting, is it related to Read 180 and System 44, this is actually SRI data, where we're comparing apples to apples, and looking at kids system-wide, three through eighth grade, and, and looking at some, some possibilities going forward and expanding into the high school, and trying to get a read on, on our, our high school graduates and reading levels as well, so I'm going to just turn it over to Jennifer and let her do her thing.
And SRI means what?
Scholastic reading inventory.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Which means what?
It's an assessment to determine, it's an assessment that determines where we are with, it's looking at more comprehension skills for where students are with comprehension, and ready to move forward, and it gives them a Lexile, Lexile reading level for where they are, but it's a primarily a comprehension assessment.
Okay, and a Lexile?
Lexile score, the scores that Jolene and Lisa showed you in work session, that range of scores, those are Lexile, that's a Lexile number that's given.
Correlates to grade level?
A reading level, mhm.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Yes, absolutely. Again, I'll be reporting just on fifth and eighth grade, because that's what our standards of excellence reports are, that's where our standards of excellence, excellence asks us, I'm sorry, to report on are those two grade levels. I'm going to first start out with your, there we go.
Wait, SOE means what, I'm sorry?
Standards of Excellence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, acronyms.
It's okay, not a problem, we're used to those.
And I just feel like maybe other people might have the same question.
No, that's a good, good question.
Thank you.
I'm going to start out with talking about where our, in 2012, 13, the fourth graders who were fifth grade last year, ended their spring scores, SRI, at 48% of our students on benchmark in fourth grade for the district, that's where we ended in the year 2012-13, so not this past year, but the year prior.
Was that the first year we did the benchmark assessment?
That was the first year where all students, third through eighth, we assessed them, but we only did the spring score, last year was the first year we did all three, so 48% is where we ended. So when you look at fifth grade last year, for the 13, 14 school year, when we assessed them in the fall, they were at 59%, and you might think, well, where's, why, you know, why did we have growth from spring to fall, first of all, there's some schooling after that, after that assessment's given, because that assessment's given usually in April, so you still have school going on, so students are still learning, you have many students who attend summer school, so there's learning that takes place there, and then in the fall, that assessment's not given until September, so you have, you have learning that's taking place, and instruction that's taking place prior to that assessment in the fall, so that's why you would see some growth there between those two numbers. Where we ended this past year, an exciting thing to look at, 82% of our fifth graders were on benchmark in the spring scores for fifth grade this past year, so that, major growth, major growth.
Wow.
So fifth grade, so help me, again, so if you go back to 12-13, fifth grade spring result was what, if you were comparing, I apologize, comparing.
Sure, 48%.
Forty, 48%, okay, so that, that fourth grade class in May of 2013 is now sitting at 82%.
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct. The other thing that I want to point out, when I'm talking about SRI, this is all fifth grade students, no matter, this is every fifth grade student, whereas what Jolene and Lisa presented on in your work session, were strictly those students in Read 180 and System 44 and that intervention program, so I wanted to clarify that for you.
And Jennifer, what fidelity things are in place, so that like, are classroom teachers giving this test, are reading teachers giving this test, we, did we train all the teachers so that everyone's, you know?
To give the SRI, the, the person who, who administers the SRI must be trained to give the SRI, so usually, the majority of schools, it is our Read 180, System 44 teachers who are giving that assessment, however, there are some schools that have some other teachers who are in teaching positions that have been trained, and because they have had that, that training, they are allowed to give the assessment, but yes, there is fidelity with giving that assessment. Seventh grade in 2012, 2013 ended their spring scores with 54% of their students at benchmark. They started the fall at 69%, again, I, I went over why there would be some growth there, but we ended, our eighth graders ended with 80% of our students on benchmark in the spring. So when you look at those numbers, and you think about where we are, that's one year into the standards of excellence with, with this, and so we are definitely on track with hitting our 90% goal by year five, and, and really, my hope with looking at that is exceeding that goal of 90% based upon that, so.
And the approach we're taking to this, not unlike what we did with graduation rate, and we have, when you have 150 kids that are dropping out of a cohort group, it's almost overwhelming initially, and once you start getting those Tier One, and Tier Two supports solid, that number starts to dwindle, and then you can really focus in and target in on those high needs kids, and focus more resources on, on, on the kids that need it most, and so, you know, we're starting to see some of those results, and, and as we were talking earlier, having 17 kids transition out of special education at the high school level, that gives us an opportunity to, to focus and work more with kids that, that need some additional support, so, you know, system-wide, we're seeing results like that, and it's really exciting, and, and, you know, and I, I mentioned this in the work session too, I mean, the value, I mean, what we do as educators, we want to see growth, and we want to see value in what we do, and what we're making a difference in, in kids' lives, and one of the advantages, one of the benefits of doing assessments like this, which we're doing three through eighth grade, is it does give, it does add value to the work that teachers do, and they can track their own growth, their growth as a professional, and the kids, even my son, he comes home, he's talking about his Lexile score, and he's excited about it, and he can tell me, tell me what kind of growth he's made, which I think is great for goal-setting, and for, for kids at the individual level too, so it's very reassuring, seeing some great, great progress.
So now, we've got the 80%, do we know what we need to focus on now to accomplish that 100%?
To?
And make, to keep moving that up?
To keep moving and directing, absolutely.
So we know exactly what, you know, we've gained this far, instead of going backward, we know exactly what?
We want to continue moving forward and making that progress forward.
So we know what we're going to work on next to make?
Absolutely. We have a plan in place for that, and, and again, as, as you look at those scores, that's a, you know, that's because of the hard work our teachers are doing each and every day in the classroom, we've had a hard focus on Tier One instruction, which has played a huge role in the success that we're seeing, our teachers are doing a fantastic job of, of working, I think Jolene, you know, commented on that, to the new, the core reading program that we have in place, which is a balanced literacy program, I think that has played a huge contributing factor for the success, or saying our, our teachers are doing a fabulous job, as you can see, as we see our students moving and growing, so huge kudos to our teachers in the classroom.
Is that surprising, almost double that, in a year?
That, that is a, a great growth, but it goes to show that when you have very strong Tier One instruction that is differentiated, I, I think one of the cool things, if you'll walk into our upper elementary classrooms, and even into the eighth grade, I've listened to some of the conversations from some of those teachers who are teaching that core content of communication arts, the differentiation that's taking place that at one time was not taking place in our upper grades is now in place, the, the conversations that are being had around data teams, and those conversations with the teachers with regards to each and every student, and where they are, and what they need to do, I think has played a contributing role to the success you're seeing, so the more we focus in on what's best for kids and differentiate our instructions, the more improvement you'll see.
I think also, you know, we, we have highly capable kids and highly capable staff, and I think, you know, our, our kids are obviously capable, performing at that level, and, and part of that is just focus, and, and, you know, one of the things that's been very encouraging, when I go into buildings and, and seeing some great results in those buildings that have the data walls up, they're tracking kids, kid by kid, and, and they're tracking each individual, individual's kids' progress, so they know their name, they know where, where they're at in their reading level, and they know what they need to push them to the next level, and, and the kids are responding to that, and, and we're seeing some great gains there, so we're, we're excited about that, and proud of the work that everybody's done to get us to that point, it's been a journey.
Help me understand, because this totally blows my whole theory about learning decreases in the summer.
Yeah.
So, at the end of seventh grade, 54% of the students were at benchmark, and that was tested in April.
Yes.
And then when they come back to us in the fall, they've made, 15% of them have benchmarked, even though they've been out of school three months, so.
Right, you also had instruction, because that testing did not occur till, towards the end of September, so you had instruction from Aug-, the August 15th, all the way up until that time, you know, where instruction's occurring, so students are getting that, and of course, if they attended summer school, you know, you're.
So when is that test given in September, late September?
It's late September, so it was, it was late September.
Five, maybe six weeks.
So, you know, there is an instruction that's taking place there, so, and granted, you have to remember too, I think we retain the majority of our students, but also, you know, you do have some students who've moved out, new students who've moved in, and so you have to take that in consideration when you're looking at that number as well, but...
We're also serving, as you know, more kids, the System 44 and Read 180, that are showing, you know, two and three and four grade levels worth of growth too, so that, that pushes the numbers up as well.
Yeah, for sure. So those, those students continue that program in summer school, those students are usually the ones who are attending summer school, and they continue that program while in summer school.
And Sarah, how many, Jennifer, how many, how many people did we, how many kids did we have in summer school this year at the elementary level?
Uh, well.
Roughly, I don't know, I'm putting you on the spot.
I'll be giving you that report here very soon, but rough, just to give you rough numbers, in elementary realm, we started off, it was over 800 students that were enrolled in summer school.
Wow.
You know, of course, you know how that enrollment fluctuates over the summer, but we ended fairly well, closed it out.
So in summer of 13, we did Read 180 in summer school?
Yes.
Because we're saying we had that gain over the summer of 13, right? And the Lexiles, that we're comparing them, like, for example, the seventh graders, in the spring, we use the seventh grade Lexiles, and in the fall, we compared them using eighth grade Lexiles?
That's correct.
Are you also seeing though, by showing this, by starting with the 2012, 2013 school year, so then, essentially?
It's the same cohort of students.
Okay, right, 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 I'm trying to get away from using the term assume, but I'm assuming that what, the purpose of using these two school years is that you've made some changes to the curriculum and are implementing, is that the whole, and this is showing us the data from, the results from that, is that correct?
Well, you're correct, we had a, we had a new reading program.
Yep.
A core reading program, which is a balanced literacy program.
Okay.
We also added phonics to our program for all grade levels that had not been in, you know, that was a, an area that we had said we needed, and so we started with Words Their Way, which is a phonics program, which is British reading, and so, there were several new things that were put in place for that, we have all buildings implementing data teams, which had not, you know, we had some that did, and some that didn't, we had all buildings having data teams, and had quite a few schools that moved to the data walls from where we, I mean, so just a lot, a lot more focus on kids and what they're doing, as well as the new core reading program and phonics.
Well, as I said in the work session, what excites me is that you're providing our own data for your own staff, faculty, and teachers to see, you know, okay, here we, is in theory, this is what we think should happen, and bam, lo and behold, and that's motivating, I think, for a teacher to be able to say, wow, what I'm doing is making an impact on my students. I think that's great.
They, they want to see their students be successful.
Absolutely.
Every teacher, that's your whole goal, and so when they see that happening and doing, they get more excited, and then they're like, this is working, I'm going to keep doing it.
Excellent, great.
Any other questions for Ms. Dozier?
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Construction update? All right. Jason, would you come up here and give us the rundown, the high school project, it looks like we have Archie here too, thank you Archie.
Archie.
What's that?
We got a project to talk about?
One or two. Gentlemen, floor's yours. All right, so we did a similar presentation as, as last meeting, I understand it, it's a little easier to see what we're talking about when we have the photos, so I'll just click through them, and if there's any questions as I go, stop me, and I can explain at the moment, so, getting started here, if the clicker will work.
That's too much.
I'm not working here, Eric.
There you go.
No, it's not. The clicker's not. I mean, if, if you wanted to click through them, Eric, I could just explain them as we go.
Is this the time when I can do my rendition of Jolene? I like that, that very pretty name.
While they're getting ready, we did notice that we started.
I'm sorry, the what?
Starting trees today.
They are going in. Yep, today.
Seen a lot of them today.
Yep. And the islands and down Indiana, we got some for twenties as well. So we'll continue that, see what's around the building. So.
Are we finished? What are we doing at the, um, buildings that are supposed to be finished? Irving and Soaring Heights and East, are we, uh, what's happening at those?
So there's, there's a few things that we're working through, um, from a warranty pers- set perspective right now. Um, at East and Soaring Heights, we've got, um, for lack of, of no understanding of what's going on, we're working through a ghost in the system. Uh, the engineers have given us a bunch of test ports. They've asked us to add, um, they're having some pressures with wat, or issues with pressures in the system and, and getting the cooler, the coolers to work properly. Um, it's causing the boilers to shut down. It's causing the VAVs to shut down and, and, and just shut off and resequence everything. So, um, they're, they're seeing what's causing it is a low, a low pressure, um, from the, from the main. We don't know why we're seeing those surges in, in the water pressure. So we've added a bunch of test ports. Um, Gold Mechanical in, in, uh, Communication with Train are working together. Um, they've, they've added a number of test ports. They've, they've done some test and balance information and given that information back to the engineers who've asked us to tweak a few things, change some, some propeller sizes and, and do another evaluation. So we're working through those right now. I think we're getting close. I mean, since summer's been out, um, we've really had to kind of leave the building in an occupied setting so that we can work through these bugs. And I think, I think they're close to figuring out what it is right now. It sounds like, um, they've done the cleaning, all the, they camered all the lines. The lines are good. Uh, it, it may just, it may require another, like a bypass valve, so that we could just get more flow into the, uh, into the system and kind of, uh, eliminate the pressure issues that we're having. So that would fix the system that we're still working with, uh, over there. There we go.
Well, I think it would be more entertaining or more fun if you brought Ghost Hunters in and did it.
But we've chased everything. I mean, literally, and, and so everybody knows, I mean, the students and the, and the staff that have been in that facility, um, it, it, one day it's one issue and the next day we're chasing another issue. And then it's another issue. And they all seem to now be tying back to, now that school's out, we're able to get in there and start looking at the cooling towers and, and the chillers and, and figure out what is causing these things. And it looks like we've kind of chased it back to the source. And it's something happening from the, the water pressure that we're getting to the building. And so, uh, I think we're close to, to resolving it.
And so does that have to do with the heating and air?
It does.
Because I was told by summer school that some of the rooms are cold and some of the rooms are hot and.
Yep, yep. That's exactly what it is. I mean, some, it's, it's caused some of them to shut off. Some of them are working too cold and it's causing condensation and we're bringing in too much outside air. And so there's a whole onslaught of things that have happened with the system as a whole, all because of the starting point, not getting the right, the right pressures. And so.
And is that related to some mold? I was told there was some mold. So is that related to?
There is no mold. Um.
Okay.
The, the issue that, that you're referring to at Irving, we had a, in the, in the heavy rain, one of the items that was done in the project when we were drilling the mo, uh, the piles at Irving, was we discovered some underground water that was, that was at that site. We mitigated that through an underside drainage system that we had put in, um, to kind of avoid there being water backup. If we had a heavy rain or if that water was just producing more than what the site could handle. Um, we had some, some, when our landscaping came in, we kind of covered up those exit devices where the, where the piping was running out, caused that water to back up. And we found a joint scene that was not done along that, that concrete wall where the, the two, two level transition goes. So DeWitt was the contractor responsible for it. And they came in and, and they stepped up, cut out all the wall, replaced the whole caulk joint, replaced all the wall. I mean, they single-handedly covered it under warranty. So it's been opened up and repaired. It was not a mold issue, it was a water issue. So.
Right, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Still think spirits are not happy.
Okay, on the high school. And so we tried to just give you an updated, uh, look from, from the transition that we had in the last meeting. I know the next time we meet again, we're gonna be, um, in school. And so we, we've got the big, the big step that we're making over the next month. But right now, we're in Area G. Just to give you, the last meeting, it was just a shell space still and the interior finishes. You can start to see the cabinets and, and the casework are going in. We've got the tops coming and the ceiling wires, uh, hanging. So, uh, over the next week, we're gonna be sequencing in, getting the, the ceilings in, getting the, the alarm devices in and, and closing these spaces out. And that's kind of just a progression photo of, of the space. Um, Area H right now, this is your welding area at this point. This picture was taken, uh, on the eighteenth and already we're painted out and welding booths are set in the location. So it's changed tremendously from just, um, the end of the week, uh, right now. But that's the, the welding area in Franklin Tech. Uh, just a, a, a quick shot at your central utility plant that is firing on all cylinders right now. If you've been in the space, you can see we've, we've got, uh, air moving and it's nice and cool, cool in there. So that's a, a major milestone for us. It's really nice to hear those systems running when you walk by there. So they're, they're moving well. Um, Area J, we are in the Franklin Tech. This is the paint booth location. Uh, we're getting ready to coordinate the paint booth with Franklin Tech folks. They're gonna be disassembling their existing one and bringing that in next week. Uh, so we'll have the walls painted out here where they could set those this week and then the new one as well, um, next Monday. So that, that area will start to come together here over the next week. Um, moving into kind of the, the classroom portion, we've got the walls painted, uh, we've got ceilings ready to go in. Still a little bit of cleanup to do, but from a finishing standpoint, it, it's pretty close, uh, to being able to be put back together here over the next couple of weeks. So no, no real issues with us pulling that space to, to finish. Uh, the main gym, Area K, uh, just giving you a, a look of where we're at right now. This shows the lockers are set. You can still see, we've got some painting. We've got these protected to start that, that paint work that's going to take place on the walls and, and closing that up. Looking at, uh, the, the gym, just looking back, you can see we've got the wood floor. At this point, we've already got that, uh, laid out and, and acclimating and they're nailing now. So this has changed a lot since that picture was taken. That's the wood planks and the bundles. We're just acclimating right now. Yeah, they'll, they'll nail down that subfloor and just stretch those all out so they can start to kind of get used. Yeah.
It looks like a parquet floor, doesn't it? Boston Celtics?
And you can see the fixed seating there, uh, up in the top of the picture. Uh, those are going in. They've advanced around, around the corner. We've got the telescoping bleachers onsite, ready to go in as soon as the, uh, the wood floors go in, which is another week and a half out. But, uh, looks like we may be able to sequence that a little bit ear- earlier than what we had expected. Um, the one thing you see at the top, the, the wood there, that's where the, the eagle goes, uh, where the salt tooth windows are. So that's why that still looks like wood up there. Jumping into, am I in Area B? Area B. Uh, these just kind of give you some, some, uh, standback looks at where you're, where you're at, looking down the classroom. The classrooms are all in the same typical condition. Ceilings are in, uh, some of the furniture that, that the district has moved in is setting in there. So this just shows you, looking at the corridor, this was the last area in our sequence that we were finishing out. Looking down the corridors, uh, we've got the flooring going in and, and some carpet shield on. Um, we've got the ceilings in. We've got tile that we're leaving out just because they're really expensive. And anybody who's going in there, we didn't want to get them damaged, but really close to be, uh, put together right now. Uh, this is just a stip, a typical classroom location. Just shows the level of finish that, that really essentially all the classrooms are in right now. Similar, just another, another look at the speech room showing where we're at with furniture being set in them. Just gives you a look at the Area C, the admin level, uh, coming in on the second floor. To the left is where the, the reception desk, uh, would be there.
Is the scaffolding down now?
It's all down.
They're, they're breaking it down. I, I think they've got it all packed out now. So. Area, what area was I in here? D. So this is the, uh, media area. The stack's on the upper level. You can see we're finishing there, just dropping ceiling tiles. Chemistry lab, just shows the level of finish. Ceilings are pulled out. They are, they're good sized rooms. The fube hoods are in. Everything's hooked up and connected. We're going through testing now. Looking down the corridor, essentially everything is, is in. We've got, uh, some display, display cases on the right there. We've got some shelves and doors to put on, but, uh, and then just final paint to touch up that we've got yet to do. This is your cafeteria area. We got the floors in, um, scaffold up in the stairway where you've got kind of the main stair that goes all three floors, um, looking down toward the kitchen. That scaffold should be coming down. If it's not, I didn't get out there today to see it, but.
What kind of ceiling goes in there?
Uh, that's the acium ceiling, the, the decorative ceiling that you have down the corridors. Uh, this is the kitchen, looking back when they were grouting. They're setting kitchen equipment in there now. This week they've been setting equipment. So that's, this was the last week picture. A lot's progressed since then.
How's it look, Rick?
Uh, looking at your large auxiliary gym, the wood floors are in. They're working on the telescoping bleachers now. So, uh, things are progressing really good in that, that space.
Did they actually seal, look like they sealed?
Where the bleachers go, yes.
Okay. And that, and that's just the area bleachers will be?
Yep, yep. And then we'll come back after they've been.
It was in there, I was in there yesterday. Didn't seem like it came out very far from the wall.
It does. Just where it would fold up. Yep.
Cause they can't, they can't finish under it once they get the, the bleachers there.
And then they'll do the rest all at once for a even finish. Uh, this is your third floor, looking down the, uh, the links, just showing the ceilings are in, walls. We've still got paint to do, um, which they're working on now. Another end, looking down the corridor of your Area C on third floor. Punch list, things going on in those spaces on third floor. D, third floor, again, ceiling tiles drop and, and this is looking, uh, down the corridor. Essentially, all of these corridors in the same condition, cleaning up and working on punch list right now. Classroom spaces are, are, uh, complete. If I'm going too fast, you can stop me and I. What happened to our site pictures there? Uh, it didn't show them.
What's on your site?
They got cut. I, essentially, we had just the looks of the building from the outside to show the Swiss pearl going on. The walls, the composite panels are completing, um, kind of in sequence, uh, around the, the wings and then infilling in between the courtyards, uh, of the gym and the main building. Uh, the Swiss pearl panels, you saw the one location on the north side of Area B that just gives you a look of what it was. That was their, their trial run to make sure that the, the panels were fitting the way they were supposed to. The full batch, basically that whole pod is supposed to arrive, uh, early next week. We'll set that pod and then we should have a one week sequence for each, each area where we'll just start putting consistent red on, uh, to finish out the building. So, and you can see the, uh.
It's easy to explain. Wherever there's black, that's where that stuff is. Wherever you see yellow, that's where the silver's going.
You got it. That's right. Exactly right. Yep.
Thank you.
Can you explain, Jason, that when we had talked to you previously this last week?
Yeah.
We know the performing arts area is not gonna be done when school starts and how that's going to work. How you guys are gonna do that as a construction site for the, to the students and the staff?
Yep. Essentially, we've taken the, uh, or taken the, the fencing that was around the site and we've condensed it to the north side of, of the building. So essentially just north of the Performing Arts Center and the practice field location that's north of the parking lot that goes up to the, uh, east side of the performing arts. We're gonna fence that whole north, that whole north face for a staging area. And we'll actually come down in between, uh, Area A or the performing arts area and the parking lot. So that way, students or staff that are in the, in the parking area are isolated from our construction by a fence. So everything's secured off and it will go all the way up to that kind of transition between B to A. Um, and likewise, on the west side where it continues around the hill where the retaining walls went in recently, it'll wrap up around there so that we can finish the veneer and keep complete isolation of the construction, uh, from students because we know that that'll still be in sequence during the start of school.
And we said, we've said all along, that's probably gonna be December, but maybe a little sooner than that.
We're, we're, we're pushing to, to see that improve. Um, if I'm being as honest as possible, we've got all, all hands on deck on finishing to get school, to get school done. So, um, I'm, I'm not liking the progress on, on the performing arts right now. I would love to have seen that improve a little bit more, but I think we can still make bigger steps after we can refocus, you know, this, getting this first milestone of school starting. So I've, there's a few, there's a few, uh, trades that we really need to make sure they're focusing heavy on getting the, the school milestone.
Yeah, electrical is your biggest one because they have the most work right now, setting finish.
They have a lot of work.
And then they have finish on the floors on the other side you can't do because they're all over there. So it's all a sequence process. So.
Yep.
Understandable.
But, I mean, December is still, I mean, that, that's still the, the date that we're tracking. Um, I, I still want to improve it and I really think we can refocus. It, time will tell. I mean, after we get into the school and we start to see that manpower shift, I think we can better isolate, you know, how much, how much we, we can actually improve that.
Universal's done a great job of, um, of scheduling, uh.
Talking, her microphone's loose.
That's done a great job of scheduling the, the project. It's, it's very, obviously a very complicated project. And, uh, uh, every time I go over there, they're in, in, either having conversations with contractors about schedule or actually working on the schedule itself. And, um, you know, just very focused and, 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 uh, very intense focus on, on hitting our, hitting our target dates. And, and, you know, those of you that have been in it, I mean, it's, it's transformative. Um, you know, I was, uh, away from it for about a week and it was night and day difference just in a short period of time, uh, that I was, uh, not in the building. And, um, you know, even day by day, when I go over there, you know, from yesterday to today, uh, to tomorrow, there'll be another transformation. And, you know, we, I got a phone call, or I saw Mike Johnson earlier today and he said the trees showed up. There's big truckload of trees over there. And, and, uh, I wasn't an hour later, I went by there and there were probably fifty trees in the ground and they were instaked and, and the beautiful trees too. Got some, got some great, uh, some great trees, great, uh. I saw some pine and, uh, I saw some evergreens and I can't remember what else was out there, but, uh.
Maple.
Yeah, maple probably, I don't know. But they're pretty good. I have to go by and see. It looks really good.
I'm sorry?
When are they coming in on the track?
Their track is gonna start, it should start tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're graded right now. They've already cut grades. They're ready to start. We were trying to sequence, do we, do we set posts or do we core the posts? And we've made that decision just to get it going. So they're gonna core the posts and we're gonna, we're gonna keep moving. It should start tomorrow. I met with them this afternoon. Uh, that, that's the other thing. I think from a, a site perspective, it's easy driving by to say, this is, there's a lot that's gotta happen for school to start. And there's no question that, that there is a lot that still needs to happen. But on our day-to-day milestones, I mean, we're, we're continuing to hit them. Yeah, we have, you know, bumps and hurdles here and there, but we continue to hit and task on these things each day, each week, um, to get to our goal. And so we still feel really good about, about where we're at. I mean, given any unforeseen things that we can't forecast, I mean, we're still in, in pretty good shape. Um, and the, the site's really gonna start to, to take shape. We're, we're moving all the material off of the south side of the site that you've seen. It's been our staging area, our staging area's been really everywhere. We've had a nice site, nice amount of room. We're gonna start confining that, getting the things to the, to the north side of performing arts where we can confine it in a fence, start dressing up the grades, getting the last of the sidewalks in. And you'll really start to see the same view that you're seeing down Indiana where the trees are in and the islands are filled in and the irrigation's taking place. That's gonna start taking place on the south side of the site. And it, it'll really start to look a lot better. We're gonna still be filling in panels all the way up to, to, uh, to school for sure. Uh, but the site, uh, I guess progress is really gonna start to come together over the next couple of weeks. Really, our planning isn't planned until August. I mean, we, we wanna make sure that we've got irrigation systems working and, and running so that we're, we're putting the ground, doesn't take away from the trees. We understand that, but we've got a, a process set up to keep those watered. So when we start putting the sod and ground and, and the other plantings, we wanna make sure that we're watering them and it's gonna look good. So that's gonna hold off to August. We got the pumps going, the irrigation going. And you'll see a big transformation in the next few weeks.
I think the coolest thing on the site's gonna be the actual sidewalks where the community can come and walk through.
Oh, you've got a nice, nice.
The site. And they actually have lights on the sidewalks, walking through the campus. And that's gonna be a nice asset for the community.
Like a college campus.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be really nice.
Excellent.
Jason, I think, I'm sorry. I think the question that probably we get most of the time is, is it gonna be ready?
Right.
And is it safe for our kids to be in there? And so that's a question we had posed to you.
City would never let us in if, uh, it wasn't safe. They wouldn't give us our CFO.
Right.
And you had, uh, explained some stuff to us about there are, I don't remember the exact terminology, but there are safety things. We make sure.
Right, right.
I don't remember what that was called, but if you could explain that again, that, you know, they come out, they inspect and they say, here are the things that have to be fixed that are safety in something.
Yep. We met again with the city officials today. Um, we meet with them on a regular basis. And in fact, today, we decided we're gonna continue to meet even more frequently than we have been. The city's been great, great to work with. I mean, just willing to be there and, and, uh, take part in, in helping outline the things that we, we wanna make sure we have in place. And so, uh, you know, we've got a, a big date that, that we're trying to do for a move in of the eleventh and the, and the, you know, really the wings, everything that you're gonna be bringing in and teachers that are gonna be getting set up. Um, some of the things that we have to have in place just for that to happen has to say that the building is safe and secure. So we can't even bring the, those teachers in to start setting up until we've got, you know, means of egress, clear pass out of the building. Some of the things that we have to have in place just for that to happen has to say that the building is safe and secure, so, we can't even bring the, those teachers in to start setting up until we've got, you know, means of egress, clear pass out of the building, fire alarms working, fire suppression, everything that, that goes along with that. And so, our, our timeline from, if this is that date, we've got a pre-inspection that we're gonna do, that will identify any of the concerns we've gotta work, and then a timeline set up to address any of those things that could catch us, so that by the time we need to hit those dates, we're tracking where we should be, so, the city's working with us great on the timing and availability, so, I mean, I really don't have any concerns about, about that, that sequence, I, if I say I don't have any concerns, there's a lot that could go wrong, I just, I can't forecast the unexpected. But if we continue to hit these steps, yeah, I, I mean, we're gonna get there.
August eleventh is the date we're really shooting for, because that's when the volunteers are showing up to start, uh, unpacking boxes and helping teachers get their classrooms set up, and moving furniture and that kind of thing, so, uh, we're shooting hard for that August eleventh date, uh, to get our occupancy permit and, uh, start moving forward from there.
And, and one thing you said to me that I really think the public could really be, um, would be interested in knowing was that you're not waiting till August eleventh for them to come out, the city's coming out, like, they came out a week ago and identified a couple dozen things, and so, we fixed one or some of those this week, and then we...
They're here almost, I, I wanna say every day, but I mean, essentially, it is, it's about every day, if it's not every day, it's every other day. Uh, we're going through those startup processes right now, we're starting the testing and making sure that the air handling unit shut off, uh, when, when the fire alarm is, is activated, that making sure that the doors operate, the fire doors that should release, making sure that those things are happening, we're, we're doing those testing things now, as opposed to the eleventh, and then we're gonna have a kind of more formalized inspection on, on the ninth, and then we'll, we'll have the Saturday and Sunday, because our weekends are, are workdays right now for us. Um, and then we'll do another re-inspection just to confirm those things have been addressed on the eleventh, and, and I assure you, I mean, Universal's policy alone, you know, we want to make sure that things are right, I mean, speed and, and time does us no good if, if the building's not safe, I mean, my son is going to this school too, so, I, uh, I wanna make sure that he's walking into a safe building just as much as I would any other student, so, uh, it, it will be safe, without question.
And, and if the gym itself is not going to be available, ready yet, is that a possibility? But if it isn't, we still have two practice gyms to use, correct?
That, that's correct, I mean, the two practice gyms are, are earlier in our sequence, uh, you know exactly where we're at, because those are our big hurdles right now, I mean, the gyms are our big, our big question in the air, th- those are the ones that push us right up to start date, and, and again, what we met about with the city today, because our tracking and our sequence, that eleventh date may not accommodate the gyms, but we've got good fire separation, we've got things built into the drawings that allow us to easily isolate those, but...
You have one corridor that can shut down that...
It does.
You already have that door put up today.
Yep, yep, yep.
But just to reassure the public that there would be the two practice gyms available before classes and...
And right now, I believe it's the twenty-first, uh, you have like an orientation or something that's gonna be set up in, in the auxiliary gym, and there's a clear access path, um, you know, for the tracks around the main gym. I, I really don't see, I mean, I really don't see there being any issues with, with getting the twenty-first, the eleventh is, is, is looking a little challenging for the gym portion, but we can separate that to get past that eleventh hurdle. Um, and then by the twenty-fifth, I mean, we're still tracking up, but it takes us right up to that date on our day-to-day tracking right now.
Thank you for answering all the questions the other day, appreciate that.
You bet.
That is the coolest door though, that's the first time I think I've ever seen one like that.
That McKean door, yeah, yeah, it's a big door. Any other questions for Universal?
I just comment, you've got about fifty more minutes of light, so...
I've still got guys out there, believe me.
One, I wanna thank you the other night when you gave, gave a couple of, a tour, a walk-through, and, uh, I was impressed, it is a huge school.
It is a big school.
Lot of walking.
Yeah, you guys will have a nice facility, there's no question about it, it will be a nice facility, one for a long time.
Personally, it warms my heart and brings tears to my eyes to see these pictures, to see the progress, and realize that our kids are gonna be going to that school, that facility, our teachers who've worked so hard and been so patient and so flexible are gonna have that beautiful facility to work in.
It makes me very happy.
And it makes me very proud of, of the work that the board's done, and, and the, the Vote Hope Committee did, and the community has done to support the projects, and I'm just, so, thanks, and we're getting there, and I'm very excited about it.
You've got a great, a great team, I mean, there's, there's a number of great contractors, Dr. Huff's gonna address everybody, uh, next week, and, and just, you know, let them know where we're at and how much everybody, you know, the district, us, everybody appreciates the work they're doing, and, and, I mean, it goes a long way, these guys are putting in long hours and a lot of days, and, and you've got a great group of, of contractors, and, um, I, I mean, I think we just keep moving in the same path, and, and we're gonna be sitting good, you know, the next time we have this meeting. And we have a group of students on Friday that are coming out to the job site to, um, deliver, um, or set up a lemonade and cookie stand, uh, for, for the, uh, workers on Friday. You can come, put on a hard hat, we won't know you different, uh, get your cookie, but, uh...
Those things are well-received.
From one to four, from one to four.
Right, cause remember, I don't work on Fridays, so I could be there.
They've done biscuits, they've done, they've done biscuits and gravy one time for them.
Yep, yep, yep.
They're well-received, I mean, the workers really appreciate it.
We've had kindergartners sending, uh, sending thank you letters, and, you know, we've, across the board, and, uh, you know, I think it's important, and, and our, and our contractors out there, I can't say enough for the workers that, that have been on-site, you know, I mean, this, you're working outside in ninety-four degree temperatures up on a, up on a lift and, and hanging stuff, and being on top of a roof when it's more like a hundred and twenty degrees on top of a roof, those guys are busting it, and, uh, really proud of, uh, the work they've done, and they're just, and they, they, they're proud of their work, and they understand why they're doing what they're doing, and it's more than just, it's just, it's more than just your typical construction project, this, this project has a lot of meaning to a lot of people, and, and, uh, we're excited to, to get the doors open and get our kids back in school soon.
I know you're gonna have some convenience stores that's gonna be upset here shortly.
Yeah, I tell you, we're keeping busy.
Cause I run into a lot of those guys every morning at convenience stores, because they're standing in line, ready to pick up their stuff before they get to the job site, so...
It is. Well, now they'll have twenty-two hundred students that'll be converging on that site, so, and parents and, and staff, so I don't think they're gonna be hurting too much.
But it's, it's an awful, it's an awesome site, it really is, drive by and see changes take place all the time.
And you've done a great job, Jason, I know it's a high-stress job, but hopefully you still have hair left when you get done, so...
It won't be long.
Oh, you didn't shave this, did you?
Just falling out.
Jason, I don't know if this is a question for you or Dr. Huff, but as far as our students being in there, I mean, in the past, we've had the big laptop rollout where you have to have the wifi so they can log on, is that something we're planning on doing?
We were talking about that, um, yesterday and today both, and it's kind of a coordination, you know, Eric's got some, got some pieces in play, uh, Jason's got some, uh, contractors he's working with to wrap up some things, um, you know, it's, it's possible, I, we certainly don't want him in there and creating a disruption to the workers, and, you know, if it comes down to that, we have a memorial that we can work out of, we have to, but...
I just didn't know if, you know, someone was watching.
We're kinda, yeah, we're, we're watching that as a possibility, I don't know if you, Jason, you have anything you wanna add to that?
I, I, I'm trying to confirm one frame, I mean, that, that one frame that we have is in one of the pictures when you're looking to the admin, that's the area where I understand that would take place, and I would hate to have that sequence happening, we, we had a, it didn't get caught in the first shipment, and so, I'm still trying to fi- finalize that date, and I understand it's gonna be, I think, around the fourteenth, so, it, it looks like that could be right in the same timeframe, but I, I don't know, I mean, I'm gonna confirm that, get back to Dr. Huff, so...
Just, just so when...
And would you clarify what you just asked?
Yeah, the, um, when we do our laptop back to the students, they usually come in ahead of time, pick up their laptops, log in with their security names, or whatever, and they need the wifi connected and a place to go, and then they take them...
So what you're asking is, is that wifi capability gonna be there?
Is that, I didn't know if the, I didn't know if the distribution of laptops was gonna be held as our new high school, or if we're just gonna make a decision and go back over to Memorial, and just, just...
It's taken us about a year and a half, two years to build the school, and Eric's gonna come in with his team overnight and have it all wired for wireless, and literally, I mean, it's, it's happening fast.
Oh, just for the laptop rollout, okay. And schedule rollouts, but you'll have a, and, you guys are working on that about the fourteenth.
And we're, we're gonna have an answer for them, because they need to know it the next few days, so as soon as he has that answer...
I can tell you, I can tell you tomorrow, I, I was trying to re-speak on some of our...
I didn't mean to rush you, I just wanted to put that out on our website, those two...
Yeah, Dr. Huff had sent that to me, we were looking at it, we were looking at it for sure.
But they can actually do, give it out anywhere.
Kudos to the tech department, they're over there with hard hats on, how many projectors do you have installed at this point?
There's ninety-five, I think there's a stall or something.
So they're hitting R two, so...
So, that's just something I would like to put on the website, where to keep their schedules and where to take them flush off.
Unless, where they can get them anywhere though, right?
Yeah, they can do it anywhere.
Keep up the good work, guys.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, Jeff? Talk about safe rooms and elementary renovations, a lot of, a lot going on there too.
I'm the, uh, other construction project. Thank you all, and, and I don't think I have a... We do have a slideshow, yeah, right, somewhat? We don't have a prezi presentation, I do apologize for that.
Then you're out.
I'll just go through some things, what I've got, I think it, okay, so what you'll see is, you'll see a, a combination, I'll kinda jump through these, what we're doing this summer, uh, for those that you don't know, we're renovating every restroom in, in the, uh, in the elementary schools right now, so it's a, a, a complete gut, so we're in the final stages of those. We plan to turn over Cecil Floyd, Stapleton, East Morland, McKinley, and, oh, excuse me, Cecil Floyd, East Morland, Jefferson by the end of this month. So you can see toilet partitions going in already, um, uh, that's some plumbing fixtures that are about to be hung on the wall, you can see the tile and the grout is, is all well on its way, and I wish I had some before pictures, because they, it's a massive difference. If they didn't have the names on the bottom, you might have a hard time telling which school they were, because the color combinations are pretty much the same across the board, but, uh...
Good.
There, there you go, just kinda flipping through that, uh, we did have a, a small renovation in the Jefferson cafeteria. Uh, that existing stage area right there was renovated into a, uh, into a classroom behind there, and that work is completed, I think you can see kind of the, I have a pointer there, you can kinda see the, where he struck his, uh, construction paper to paint that wall, so that, that work is in the final stages, they're putting the ceilings and the lights in and stuff like that. Jefferson parent drop-off, uh, I think this was taken probably, uh, Friday, and all that curb and gutter is completed now, and we're set up to do all of our paving, uh, with the exception of one satellite parking lot next week, so, uh, just in time for, for the teachers to come back, and, and, uh, no issues on that side right there. Uh, there's another bathroom, another bathroom. Uh, this is the inside of Jefferson's, uh, safe room, uh, obviously, as you can see, uh, you can see the CMU wall, all the pre-cast is obviously up, but you can see that the, the CMU walls are completed, they've, they've installed this mezzanine, it's all done, and all of our fire suppression and electrical are in overhead, and you can see ductwork right there on the side, so, uh, we're probably two weeks away from starting our painting in that, uh, safe room there, so it, it's flying right along. Jefferson is actually probably the furthest behind of the three, uh, safe rooms that we have going on right now, in Jefferson, Royal Heights, and Kelsey Norman, excuse me, and Dunewick. Uh, that, this safe room portion and the connector will finish mid to end September, but I, I should say that with a caveat, that all of our new, all of our summer work for all of our new roads and parking lots and, and backfilling, cleaning up the site will be a hundred percent complete, and, and kinda like what Jason said, on a much smaller scale on each of these, we will be condensing our, our, our security fencing and worker access to a much smaller area, so, so the presentation for the school is gonna be such that the exterior's complete. So we're gonna be down into the final month of our work once school starts. Uh, and please, again, stop me if you see anything, uh, what you can see is, you can see that the storm shelter there is all bricked out, and what this, this picture's taken from is this is our connector link building right now, the building that connects to the existing school, that masonry starts in the morning, actually, so, it's only about a week to install that masonry, they'll be installing steel hopefully by the end of next week, uh...
Do you have a different mason on each one, or is it the same mason?
No, I've got the same mason on all, all four of these.
So is this one open to the school? Is this one open to the school?
Yes, they are all, I'm sorry, they're all connected to the school.
We said that was a walkway, so...
No, it's a connecting link, I'm sorry, the, the, uh, the mason will start in this area, where this, this is a concrete slab.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just missed, I just misunderstood.
Uh, right there is Kelsey Norman, and this picture was taken Monday, that, that CMU is, is, uh, concrete masonry is completed there, and they're scheduled to be on-site Thursday with the steel, just finished a couple days early on that, the steel delivers Thursday, and probably about four to five days to put the, uh, structural steel roof system on that, and we'll be roofing it next week. So, uh, that connector has taken shape a lot. Uh, right out here is your front parking lot that, in this area, again, this is our major site work project that we started back in June, once school let out, all of that parking will be completed, uh, we're gonna have from that connecting building over, and then the whole bus loop done back on the other side by August, by next week, it, it paves next week, it will strive next week, we'll realign all of our fencings and have everything condensed down to just that safe room area right there, uh, same, same MO, a, a safe, clean, uh, site for the students to come back to, students and staff.
How many, uh, in front of Staples, Kelsey Norman, how many, uh, handicap spaces do we have?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
And we had one originally, at the front of the building, we had one, so there's probably two.
There's a requirement, uh, per number of students or per number of people, and per number of parking spots, there's a combination there, so there's gonna be adequate handicaps for parking. This is the backside of Kelsey Norman, and, uh, you know, uh, Jason with Universal said how they had the luxury of a, a large site, we don't have that anywhere, and, and, uh, and that this is about as tight as they come, well, the next one's tighter, but this is one of the tightest ones, and this is that same road that I was talking about, that we're gonna be finishing up this week, so we can turn that over.
What are those big tubes running in front of Kelsey Norman and around the neighborhood?
That's not ours, that's, uh, no, I think the city's putting in the sidewalks, and, those are called wattles, it's a, a stormwater protection thing, so that muddy dirt doesn't get onto the, into the waterways. This is that, uh, parking lot, so you can see it's, it's, uh, it's ready for, for the base rock and the paving to start now. More bathrooms, lots of bathrooms, I think we, we've done like thirty-four bathrooms or something. Uh, this is the tight one right here, and, and I, I apologize if anybody has to drive this road on a regular basis, but we're doing the best we can with it, the good news is, is this paves next week, all that fencing goes away, all of this brick is gonna be done by the end of this week, and it's gonna look like a totally different area by, by, uh, by the end of next week, when the, when the, uh...
That's a rough road to go down in front of, isn't it?
And we have a major issue for you. But, uh, what, what's gonna happen is a, a solid area for, for parking for teachers, so nobody's gonna be parking parallel hopefully anymore, so that's gonna clean up and open that road for, for the bus traffic. More bathrooms. Uh, we're real happy, you know, the, we've set a goal for all of these bathrooms to, to be done by the, the second week of, of August, uh, we've pushed that ahead a little bit to accommodate the massive push for, for all the custodial staff to go to the high school on the eleventh, so we're gonna try to meet and exceed on, what we, we know for sure, we're gonna do it on nine of the ten, there's one that's kinda lingering out there, and, uh, uh, I talked to, to Michael Landis about that just before the, the meeting, but, but nevertheless, uh, we're gonna accommodate that, the staff is gonna, or, the, Mike's staff is gonna have adequate time to come in and clean all the corridors, do the waxing, get everything moved back in properly. This is some of the, the theme of projects that were well completed, but we've had to go back in and do these summer renovations, so, a little different color scheme there. Uh, and, and talk about changing per day, I mean, the tile is, is essentially done at all, all six bathrooms at Staple, or all four bathrooms at Stapleton, partitions are going in, ceilings are going in, so, so they change pretty quick.
I see you start some, maybe, or someone, they start some site work at West Central?
Yes, sir, uh, yeah, I didn't get a, didn't get pictures taken on that, but what we've got at, at West Central is, we've got it site graded, ready for parking, we've come into a little, a few little hiccups that are being taken care of with the engineer tomorrow on some grading issues, but, uh, but we've got, we've still are maintaining, we've, we've got slack time, it, we've got the same concrete contractors on those two projects as we do all four that we have going on right now, and we're making a massive push this summer, we've got float in our schedule for when our pre-cast panels deliver, so we're, we're, it's there for us, and we're not changing any dates or anything, but we're gonna maybe have to compress some time for Dalton Killinger to, uh, to get in at West Central in Columbia and get our footings in by, by our September deliveries. We've got some parking lots that, that we're in the middle of doing over at Columbia right now, so that we have that cleaned back up and curb and gutter in and everything for, for school to start as well. We're touching a lot of schools right now.
Yeah, there's a lot of things going on at all those schools.
What's going on at Jung Field Safe Room? Jung Field Safe Room?
There's nothing going on.
Is it completely finished?
Yeah, well, uh, there's, there's a couple of items that are left to complete, we've gotta put the vinyl lettering in, we bid that this summer, so there's some graphics that go inside, uh, we, we had a change where we changed one of our fences.
Okay, that's okay, I just, so that, that's pretty much done, done.
Day to day, we've got a certificate of occupancy on it and everything like that, Mike's had his guys in there putting lockers, building lockers, and, and getting it all spiffed up for your twenty-second...
And we did do a, a community, did our community mailing, we had our community open house for, for that particular area, we'll have our big ribbon cutting, uh, first home football game and, and all that, so we've got some activities around that when we, when we get to that point.
One thing I didn't touch on, I'm about ninety-five percent complete on all... One thing I didn't touch on, I'm about ninety-five percent complete on all of our punch lists from what we call Phase One, which junk's included in that, Stapleton, Cecil Floyd, Eastmoreland, and McKinley. About ninety-five percent is complete. Our goal is to have, to be completely out of there by, by July thirty-first. Have Kyle with PLJBD come back out, we'll walk everything again, make sure that every item got checked off as completed, and we'll, we'll be clear away from, from those, uh, by the end of this month.
On the, there at the safe room on the. Was it the east side, Mike? Where that rock was all that?
Oh, yeah, along the track.
Yeah, on the track, has that been taken care of yet? Or Mike coming back to take his hand, okay.
Sorry, I want to clean up, too, that the steps are there.
Okay.
Steps are, have been widened and, and that's going to be.
Yeah, that we were concerned about.
Yeah, my little feet wouldn't even.
Yeah, Mike's little feet wouldn't step, make the steps.
There's such a great change right there, if you're talking about the rock area.
Yeah.
You know, he was, uh, the, the design put a challenge, I'm not a designer, but you can see that the challenge of the design is maintaining the grand stance. You can't have it any lower because of the way the track slopes. I mean, that, that, that great change from the track to that building had to happen.
Mike and I discussed that, that concern of that step, that those kids are going to be coming in and out with their football uniforms on and cleats, and there was no room there, and so that was the concern that we had when we first seen it, so I'm glad that it's been taken care of.
Yeah, it's been addressed.
I apologize if you address this. Safe room construction at Columbia and West Central, when does that begin?
I did address it, and it already has began.
Yep.
We've, uh, we've done site clearing for, for parking lots and things like that in preparation to get the schools ready. Our preca, everything is, is, all these projects are built around these pre-cast deliveries for our, our storm rooms. I mean, it's, it's concrete that's bashed in Kansas City and, and delivered, and, and their schedule of delivery is how we push our construction up to that point. That's our first milestone. And so, uh, we've got all of the sites quarantined off for, for safety and security, and, and the building pads will be starting within the next three to five days really, and, and con- concrete foundations will start going in, uh, within two weeks.
And are they Phase Three?
That's what we call Phase Three.
And completion date on that estimate?
It's going to be the winter of, of two thousand fifteen. I'd say, uh, late January, early February right now is what we're targeting.
And one of the, one of the challenges we've had with the panels is that there's a ton of safe room construction going on across the state, and so our stuff's in a, in a queue in front of or behind a whole lot of safe room construction projects.
And I'll be glad to give you an example on that. There's, there's really about three people that bid that work, and one of them's out of Tulsa, and one's out of Kansas City, and one's out at, out by Springfield. And Springfield Company, and it won't say any names, but they came in second place, and what, one of our requirements on our bid form was is to give us your lead time. And the first place guy thankfully had the shortest lead time, which was still five and a half months, okay? So, uh, the second place guy put his lead time is eight and a half months delivery. So you really have to, you really have to, you know, I mean, we can mobilize and get all these things done, and then it sets, and then it, it's almost counter, it, it's counterproductive for a team to, to work hard and, and, and then have to pull off, you know? So you want to sequence it so it makes sense for everybody, most efficient as possible.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Kind of a good segue into the next topic, which is JHS FTC Safety and Security, going to, uh, kind of feeding off of, uh, Dr. Ford's comments, but we've got Jim Hounshell here today, Jason Cravens, uh, to visit with us about some of the safety and security features of the New Joplin High School, and, um, and, uh, I think you'll be, be impressed with what we've got going on there. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Jason, and you can introduce the topic, and I think we also have a video at some point.
Well, first, I, you know, I don't get an opportunity to brag on a, a very humble and, uh, quiet guy that does a lot of work for the district, and, and he's really, uh, his.
Me. Sorry.
His obligations and responsibilities have increased greater since the storms, you know, as we have safe room constructions. You know, Jim's, uh, gone out, he's, he's researched, uh, safe room procedures, uh, he's trained the volunteers, demand the safe rooms with the new schools, uh, he's brought Safety Task Force with our SRO team, walking the buildings, developing safety procedures, making sure that we're, uh, everything's, uh, safe and, and, uh, sequenced and, and people are trained. So I just want to thank him, and, uh, he didn't, he didn't get, he's a quiet guy, he doesn't get a lot of recognition, but he does a lot of hard work behind the scenes, so I want people to know that. So, thank you, Jim.
Yep.
That being said, uh, we do have a lot of exciting, uh, security features, and Jim's very thorough, and so, uh, I, I think there's a video that, that will be shown. Talks about the safety features, um, for the, the new, uh, high school, and then also the safe room, safety features of the new high school.
You have a video?
I believe we have a video.
What?
We don't have a video.
You got to send this, you got to hit send, is that what?
I think.
So disappointed.
Kim, do you have that on your, on your laptop, the video?
I'm sure I have.
Okay.
Did I get, did I get video?
No, probably not.
Do you want to, uh, maybe we don't have a video.
No, we've, we've got one.
Maybe Jim's just going to present.
We'll talk amongst ourselves.
All right.
Musical interlude?
Uh, when we start talking about these safe rooms, did you have the plan to get the volunteers, that you do the training of those people that are in the different safe rooms that are already open?
What's your question?
We need to stop talking to the microphones, please.
On the safe rooms that we've already got established?
Yeah.
And we had those volunteers in those safe rooms, did you get those people and have you, are you able to train those?
Well, the principals at each of the schools, uh, they try to find parents within, you know, that area that they know.
Right.
And feel comfortable with doing that type of thing. So they get those for us, and then we put them through training.
Okay, so you do the training?
Mm-hmm.
Where's the training come from, the guidelines?
I don't know where we came up with those.
We, we went to, uh, Seneca and reviewed their safe room trainings, then Jim pulled, uh, two or three other sites that had, uh, safe room training, then we actually had, um, leaders and, and police fire from, from, uh, the local area just come and, and ran, uh, the procedures by them, and then we took them back and, and spent more time with them, kind of refining and saying what's, what will work for, for our schools, so.
Okay, interesting.
Just all thumbs up in the back, we'll be closed.
And the question always, and I'll, I'll just address it now, as far as when this, this, when the safe rooms are ready for, uh, the, the community aspect, we do send out a mailer to the, the population that, it's usually about, uh, zero point four miles is kind of just an average, uh, radius around a, a safe room. And so it varies a little based upon the site, but we do send out a mailer that shows a map of the school, where the safe room is, where they access it, so that when, uh, there is a severe weather situation, that public will know where to go. We do encourage them to, to scout the site out ahead of time so that they're not scouting it out when it's pouring down rain or, or, uh, ugly out. We want them to be able to see it in nice weather so they know how to get there in bad weather.
What do they do if they have questions? The, the public, do, should they contact the principal of the school?
Within that mailer, there's, uh, contact information if they have questions.
Mm-hmm. One thing I've heard Jim, that maybe is taken care of, is that the parents that we identified as being the ones that would go open it up, I don't think I stopped to think that we're sending them over when a tornado watch is issued, and they're ending up being over there seven or eight hours.
That's true.
With no food, no drink, and so I think maybe that's fixed now, but maybe we need to schedule volunteers in shifts or something?
Yeah, that's pretty much what we've done. Each, each school has a team. It's not just two individuals, you know, husband-wife team. It's, uh, typically, uh, three, four families that, that work together, and that's what we encourage them to do, to work together, especially on those long, uh, tornado watches, uh, to take turns, you know?
Yeah, good.
Every two, four hours, whatever. Each one of them, um, for example, if you're one of the volunteers, you've got the first storm, you've got the second, you've got the third, and so forth. If you can't make it, I mean, we encourage that good communication between them. Uh, if you can't make it, you, you make sure you're communicating with your other team members, so somebody will cover that for you. You in turn can, can cover for them when it's their turn. So I think you're right, we do have that fixed now. Um, it, it took a couple of storms to do that, but, um, there, there is real good communication, it seems like now, between the teams.
I should know you had that taken care of.
Are we there yet?
Almost.
That's been a learning process for you as well, hasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we, we had no idea what to really expect, um, and, and that's what we're doing. We're, we're adjusting as we figure out what's not working or what is working. We, we're adjusting as we go.
Have you had any other school districts contact you yet since we're getting online with all this, that the other schools are building safe rooms across, maybe the state or anywhere else?
Um, only one in, in Arkansas, which Arkansas is really the state that has the most in their school districts, the most, uh, community safe rooms. But one did call and ask, you know, what we were doing this week.
Okay.
It does have music.
At the new high school, what we have done is provided layers of protection, starting with the perimeter or the grounds, uh, then at the building, the second layer, and then the third layer being, uh, different types of safety and security features inside the building. First thing you'd think of is fencing, and we do have fencing around, um, the campus itself. It doesn't completely, uh, go around the, the building and the site, but it is that we do have quite a bit of fencing along and around the, uh, grounds. This will prevent people from just, uh, simply, you know, cutting across campus, for example, going from one street to another, but hopefully it'll also make it a little more difficult for the individual that wants to sneak on campus for whatever reason. We have a lot of lighting. There's lighting on the building and around, uh, the building. That's to, uh, for crime prevention, uh, keep, you know, discourage people from, uh, breaking into the building or defacing it. But we also have a lot of lighting within the parking lots, on the roadways, and on the sidewalks, because there will be a lot of night activities here at the building. We want people to feel safe, and lighting is a way of doing that. Uh, we also will have cameras on the, uh, exterior of the building as well as in the parking lots. Also want to mention that we'll have parking permits. We require students and staff to, um, uh, have parking permits or a parking decal on their vehicle, and by, uh, requiring them to do that, it'll make it a lot easier than for security to, um, determine whether a vehicle belongs on the campus or not. All the exterior doors will have locks, and we're going to lock all of the exterior doors except at the two main entrances of JHS and FTC. Each of those exterior doors that are locked, the majority of them, will have a, uh, alarm system on them. It's a bar type of alarm. What that does is it, i- i- it discourages, uh, an individual from opening that door. We would like for those doors to remain closed during the day. If it is open, it will emit a very loud alarm. The other feature that we have on those doors is a contact, uh, a set of contacts. So in case a, a teacher does, uh, take us, a class out, one of those doors, they can turn that alarm off. But we don't want the door to be left open. So if, if somebody does prop that door open, once those contacts are broken, it will send a text message or an email then to, um, certain individuals who can then go and investigate and, and make sure that door's closed. First thing that a visitor should notice when they come into our facility through one of the main entrances will be, uh, our visitor management system. And this consists of, uh, a, your ID being swiped into this system. It's called the Raptor system. When a visitor comes into the building, they will, uh, first see a, hopefully a receptionist. Uh, that receptionist will take their ID, swipe it through the system, um, that will check, that will check their ID through the national database for sex offenders. It will also check a database that's customizable. Uh, for example, we can enter information into it. If we have a staff member who comes to us and tells us that they are receiving threats from a spouse or whatever, we can enter that information in there, and, uh, it will also pop up with alert when that, when that individual comes to visit. An alert will pop up, like I just said, if that person is in either one of those two databases. Once an alert pops up on the screen, it will automatically send out, um, a text or email to certain individuals who can then come to the reception area and investigate that a little further. If everything is all clear, it will print out a sticker, um, ID. It has your picture from your ID on it, your name, uh, the date, uh, time, so forth. Once they've gone through that process, then they still have to be buzzed in. So that's another feature that we have, uh, the receptionist has to buzz them in once they are cleared. The buzz-in, uh, prevents them from bypassing the receptionist. Another feature within the building is a duress button, and this is the same button that's at all of these schools throughout the district. Uh, that button, once pushed, will send a silent alarm to, uh, the company who will then in turn call the police. And it will also, uh, put out a audible alarm or alert to tell people within the building to, um, that they need to lock down. They're strategically located, and they go along with the, uh, duress buttons or the lockdown. Whenever there's a lockdown initiated, these doors will be closed, and that will then kind of limit, uh, where the intruder, if there is an intruder, where that intruder can go within the building. Some of the other features, uh, there will be, uh, like I mentioned before, on the outside, cameras, uh, there'll be cameras throughout the building. There will also be two armed individuals, myself and Officer Barchak from the Joplin Police Department, and we will have, uh, safe rooms throughout the building.
The new site will have five actual safe room locations. Four of them will be solely for students and staff, and one of them, uh, is for students and staff and is also for the community's use. The safe rooms at Joplin High School will be similar to the other safe rooms, uh, across the district in, in procedures and how they run. Um, they'll be open during severe weather. The capacity for the community safe room is just under twenty-four hundred, uh, people, and then throughout the building, there's probably an estimated capacity to hold, uh, five thousand, five thousand, five hundred, uh, people throughout the entire building in a safe room. Our protocol is when the safe rooms are ready that we do send a mailer to all the eligible residents who live within the appropriate radius of, of the safe rooms, so that they know what the procedures are and when the, the rooms will be open. As far as students taking shelter during the day, if there is a tornado siren, students will obviously take shelter, but the other advantage of having them built within the school is if, if the weather, uh, looks severe and, and feels severe, then administration can actually have students take shelter at any point, and they don't have to walk out through the weather to get to their rooms.
Yeah. A lot of progress that has been made. With construction recently was obviously, that was me with my hard hat on, and I've been over there helping out a lot, uh, so.
Appreciate you taking time off the construction.
Yeah, I told Danny I'd shoot the video with him, you know, for him, but, uh, it set us back. At least, Danny.
Is that why we didn't hit that milestone?
Yeah.
How many takes did that?
That was one, and I'm not, just for the record, I'm not reading a teleprompter. I'm looking at Danny, and Danny's tall, and so I'm just, I'm looking at him, that's why I'm looking up off, and it looks like I'm looking off in the corner, I'm really looking at, at Danny, so.
You did a fine job. Thank you for, is there any questions?
When we talked about a new, with, uh, SRO officers, uh, this past three years, we've had an extra one, right? And how's, how, how's that? I mean, is it because of separate campuses or?
Yeah, with the two separate locations, we, uh, that's why we took on the extra position to, so that we would have an SRO at both, uh, high school campuses. Now with the, the two high schools together, um, you know, if, if you're asking me, do we need that position? I'm not in a position really to answer that, but what I can tell you is that Officer Barchak and I have discussed this, uh, the fact that there would be two of us at the new high school, uh, whether we could handle it or not ourselves.
Do you also do district-wide too, though? Are you?
I do, yeah. I, I, I get called away occasionally, um, you know, transport a student home from a I get called away occasionally, you know, transport a student home from a great school, you know, if a parent can't come and get them. Go get a parent to go get their child from a great school or something like that. That does occasionally happen. That takes me out of the building once in a while. It's not a daily occurrence, but that is occasional.
I mean.
I used Jim a lot. I was there.
Going into the school, I mean, of course, here we go back, we're going to start back with changes, changes for kids that's, now we're going to gather all of them back together. We've had two campuses, so now we're going to go back to over 2,000 students. I would like to see for this first year to maintain another SRO officer until we can see where we're going to be. I mean.
I would too, because the square footage has tripled.
I mean, we're talking 150,000 more square feet. I mean, for me, just to look out there to see that, I'd like to make a motion that we maintain another SRO officer for another year for this district without school.
Well, I'd like, as far as safety and security, you know, one of the things to keep in mind, we've had split campuses, and so, so when you think of an SRO, you know, Mr. Jason Barchak's SRO at the 910 Center, the incident rate at the freshman sophomore building was, was a lot. They had almost no incidents that required police at the mall school. And I would say, there's a couple of factors to that. One is environment, you know, when you have a new environment, you have wider hallways, you have carpet on the floor. When you have that type of facility, your incident rates, I think that contributes to decrease. The other thing, since we were in the old schools, we've been to one-to-one. Discipline as a whole across district has dropped in at the high school behavior since we, since tornado. Other things, as far as school safety, that don't jump out and say, hey, this is school safety, but the transitions class, having a caring adult for every student, building peer relationships, link crew, those are the things that build to the atmosphere. So some of the things that contribute to most school safety is really, it's not, even though we have the best SROs in the world, we have gym, we have safety, but it's really the school environment and culture that create a safe environment. So, you know, my.
Yeah, I'd rather just get in there, and if we have a need, then, you know, we had the high school, I was there, we never had them.
Jim and I talked about that. He and Jason Barchak will be there, and they can evaluate consistently, and then if there's a need, I mean, if it's like, hey, we've got a constant need here, then we would be able to.
I would do, I'd rather be proactive and then make that, because you, we still had you two, we still had two at 11th, 12th grade center, because you at the 11th, 12th grade center with Victor Sly. So, I mean, we're going into a fact that we're going into a school that we're pulling all school kids together now, that they haven't been now for three years. You're going to have motions change? We talked about change in the past, now we're having these kids change again. For me, it's a safety issue, and I don't mean, and I know that, I mean, we've heard the numbers, and I agree, but it's a small price to pay.
Do you think it's a safety issue with intruders or a safety issue student against student?
No, no. I just think that, I think it's a small price to pay, it's having that sort of SRO officer at the school.
That's a $40,000 expenditure, so it's, I mean, it's real money.
That's small money compared to our budget.
And I was getting ready to ask, and we cover 100% of that.
That one we will have to.
That one we would have to.
So, but we split the other SRO.
Yes, that's correct.
Fifty-fifty with the city?
Fifty-fifty with the city. I think it's, is that where we're at now? There was a period where they took on all of it, I think, for that first year after the storm, and we've gone 50/50. But what I'm hearing is I've got my school resource officer saying that they don't feel like the need is there now, but let's evaluate, and we can always add later, but it's harder to, we add a position, you know, and we decide we don't need it.
Jim, how many years of law enforcement do you have before we hired you?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, retired.
Jason Barchak and I have talked about this quite a bit, because we felt like we probably were the only ones that were going to be, you know, covering security at the new high school, and we feel pretty confident that we can handle it, just based on it's always been two for 2,200 kids, you know, since I've been here.
How much do you think the new security features will help with management, security management?
I think that, you know, it is, I mean, that's really the only difference that Jason and I had talked about was the square footage. I mean, it's going to be a lot of area to cover, but we have 285 cameras, something like that. I mean, we've got a lot of cameras that are going to help.
What do we have on the old campus, do you recall?
Hundred and ten.
It's been a long time ago, 110?
Well, we didn't have alarms on exterior doors on the old campus.
We are going to have other features that are going to help us, I think, but, and that's, that's when Jason and I talked, and, you know, not just completely scrapping the idea, especially, I mean, you know, I'm in a, I'm in a tough place here, I feel like, because this is Dr. Cicada's building, and he should decide on what staff he feels like he needs or doesn't need, not me. All I'm, all I'm saying is that I feel like we can handle it if that's the direction you guys decide to go. And certainly we'll evaluate that and let you know different, you know, if that changes, but.
I think we just get, we need to have building fields. We're not even in it yet. And I think you guys are, and Jim, you've always been very honest with me when you've needed things, and we meet every week now, which we haven't. You know, this last year, we started meeting on a weekly basis, and you've been very honest with me about needs, and if the need's there, certainly we'll bring it back, because I think safety is number one priority, and you've got to have that first. We've spent a lot of money on this building from a safety standpoint that we didn't have in the old building. And, you know, and at the end of the day, I think one of the things that, you know, we've done okay, that we can do better on is, you know, it's the transition times, you know, what happens in the hallways between, between classes, and we've got, I mean, there's going to be every nook and cranny, that building's going to have, we're going to have staff in there, so it's, you know, it's well supervised from a staff standpoint. I think it's just, you know, incident.
If you want to see the.
It's incidents, you know, the things that happen that they need, require assistance, and if that gets to a point where, you know, we require three SROs, we got a, we got a problem above and beyond, I think SRO, our SRO needs, if it gets to the point where we're needing additional police officer support on the high school campus.
If you want to see the fencing, there's mock-up fencing, I think, right now over at the Universal trailer, right there on Grand, so you can see exactly what it's going to look like.
Around the campus. But I want to expand on Randy is saying that, just the design of the building, you've got, what, five or six kind of isolated areas, and so maybe part of it is, will you both be housed in the same building, or will one of you be in Building B and one of you in Building D, and where are the principals going to be housed? Because if there are kids fighting in Building E and everybody's housed in Building B, so maybe that's part of this issue is, how are you guys housed? Are you, do one of you in Office B and one of you in Office A?
What I would say is that if we've got all of our resource officers and all the principals in the offices, adding one more resource officer to be in an office isn't going to do us any good. It's about being out in the buildings and principals and.
Being out on.
Supervisory staff.
Moving around the building, I mean, that's what we expect to do. There are, like you said, a lot of those.
Lots of hiding quarters.
Sections, but that's where we are going to really have to use our staff to help with security. I mean, it's not just me and Jason Barchak, or me, Jason Barchak and Victor Sly. It really takes everybody to get out between classes, you know, supervise their halls and those sort of things in order to make it work. We have known that for a long time, no matter which building we've been at, it really does take staff to help do that.
Are the principals housed in different buildings or?
Yeah, they're housed.
Different floors.
Corridors.
Same building, different floors.
The principals always get out in the hallways. When the bell rings, bam, it's like a bad lobster.
I share Randy's concern, but I think you just have to wait and see.
I promise, if we need it, we'll bring a recommendation.
The only issue, and I'm listening to, I'm listening to everything you guys are saying, the only thing that stands out in my mind about waiting and seeing is the consequences of waiting and seeing on something like this.
We need to speak in our microphones if we can't see.
Oh, I forgot.
The consequences of waiting and seeing for a need on something like this, I just, I'm not sure that's something, that that's a variable that you necessarily want to fool around with. I just throw that out there for discussion, you know, and I think that's where, I think this discussion is important to have. I agree that we don't know what to expect in the new building, but I also agree that it's big and so, and overwhelming, and I almost feel like maybe we should do it the reverse and have somebody and then decide if we don't need them at semester, or just keep reevaluating all the time and meeting with you guys to see if what needs there are.
Well, most school districts also don't have the caliber of what we have in Jim, and have a 25-year retired vet.
Right.
From the police department running our security in our school district. Typically, you just have resource officers doing it.
Yeah, okay.
So we have a luxury of having a Jim Hounshell in our district.
And I am not trying to undermine his expertise at all.
And he is an expert, and none of us are an expert in security.
Correct.
None of us.
But he can't be in two places at once.
Well, and Jim can probably speak better than any of us as to what, what his percentage of presence in the building is, because when he's present, you really have two, the equivalent of two school resource officers.
Okay.
Because he is armed, he's trained, he has 25 years of police background, so, so his presence in the building, how much he gets called off, may be a good indicator of his, what the level of his presence would be this coming school year.
I was just going to say, one of the, one of the things, and I know this has been done for years, I remember when Richard Moses did it, he was, you know, 25, 30 years in police work, and he did help, you know, he did security, and yet he was the one that called and took the sick kid home and brought the parent to the meeting to things. I'm thinking, why would we use such a valuable person in charge of security to be a taxi for us? Can we?
I think that, actually, I think Jim's role's evolved since then. I believe he's, he's present in the building more often because he's.
But he is, as he said, he is called out. I'm just curious, is there some other way to cover those issues?
Yeah. Could we not call Jim? Could we call the middle school SRO that is assigned to?
I don't know, it just seemed like, why you would take the lead security person in the district and have him taxi students around when it's needed, you know, I just.
That's a good point.
Jim, can, I mean, you'd be in the best position to speak to that issue.
I don't know what to say to that other than.
Yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean.
I mean, I, that's what, originally, my job was basically that. I was a truant officer. That's what I was hired as. It has evolved since then, and I do a lot less than that. I'm probably in the building 90% of the time, doing, I still do safety for the whole district, not just Joplin High School. I do it for each building, evacuation plans, all those kinds of things that can be done at the high school while I'm working, you know. But it's those occasional, you know, 10% of the time I might get called out to take somebody home, do those kinds of things. I'm not sure what a better way is. I mean, if you guys can come up with one, that's great.
Let me say, it's the same thing. I know principals do that kind of work too. I mean, we've got a number of people that get engaged in that, nurses, counselors, I mean.
That's true.
People do, it's got to be done when they got to do it.
Just a thought.
Yeah, I don't disagree, Jim.
Pretty much now, I'm called as a last resort. I mean, they have tried everything else, you know, and they call me finally.
So can we maybe get a periodic update?
Sure, absolutely.
How's that?
I think, I think we get school started, get school year kicked off.
Security update, and then we know.
Maybe September, October timeframe, maybe we come back and just kind of give an update on how things are going, and by then we'll have maybe some of the bugs worked out of the system, and you guys can get a feel for what it, you know, you're driving, you know, driving this new machine, what it feels like, and where the hot button issue, maybe, you know, adding a camera here or there takes care of an issue that, you know, our hotspot that needs to be taken care of, and, you know, there might be some other fixes too that we can problem solve before we come back.
Right, maybe it might not need to be another person, but something else.
And one of the other things too, and we're not, you know, we've been having some conversations, you know, there's some watchdog type of programs out there at the elementary, elementary schools. I think Web City has, I think they call like Web City Muscle, I think there's something like that, and, you know, it's gentlemen and others that spend some time in the building working with kids, but also walking the corridors and things of that nature. We've been having some similar conversations about providing some volunteer opportunities related to that, working with youth ministers and other role models in the community that can maybe spend some time on site and have more eyes and ears, but working with Joplin PD and in providing some training for those folks, you know, kind of look fours, and then working with Jim Hounshell and others. So, you know, it's really about eyes and ears as much as anything, and there may be some other, other ways of being accomplished, same end.
Does the salary have to be that high? Like, can there be a person that only comes when students are in school? As opposed to, I think, SRA's, do you work year-round? Do our SROs work year-round?
Not in the school. They do work year-round at the police department.
So they're not working for SRO with JP?
But like on days when we don't have school, the students are off for whatever reason, are the SROs at school?
No.
Or are they down working police station stuff?
Yes, that's correct.
But if we had a retired person who only worked just days that the kids were in school, that could, I mean, maybe lessen the salary.
Mr. Cravens, what do your high school principals think the need is? Is, are they comfortable with?
On the high school principals? I, you know what, if, if I were in the high school, I would say, give me more people always. I mean, that's honestly, and even selfishly.
And for what reasons would you, would like to have more people?
Well, more people, it's, more hands make the work lighter. I mean, that's always the case, but, but that doesn't, you know, how I see it.
I guess my question would be, what issues would be avoided if you had more people?
I don't, I don't know that there would be.
At a high school level, because we, our discipline rate is going down.
Right.
And so we're feeling that we're not going to have discipline issues as rampant when we're going into a new building, at least for the newness.
Culture, yeah, culture of a building is defined by.
Is that what I'm understanding?
That's, yes. I would say that it's not a predictable element. I think that, I think, you know, my personal, I'll have to project my personal opinion. The building's really big, which is scary, you know, the square footage, but the reality is there's so many different things going into this building that, that shape it. We have a lot of personnel and the procedures, your daily procedures, teachers in the hallway, that every single teacher is a safety individual, so it really comes down to how is it run and what are your daily routines? What, what processes do you have in place? Those are the things that make safety or create an environment that's not safe. And so if we go into the new building with its beautiful culture, with its, its layout, and teachers are being vigilant and they're trained, we have a lot of the features that we just saw in the video, those are the things that provide safety. I think we can evaluate through the, through the process if, if it seems like, hey, there are too many blind spots, you know, we do have cameras, we can evaluate. We have been talking about volunteers or watchdog type program, putting eyes and ears in there. So even with that, we could get more radios, which would be a less expensive approach to create a eyes and ears where someone could call in and say, hey, we've got a situation and get someone. So, you know, just as a steward, I would, I would just say, I would rather evaluate it than make a decision that costs money that we can't undo, but we can always hire someone. I mean, we could hire someone in October and be hired, but we can't undo a hire, and I, I just don't know that the situation warrants hiring at this point when we have so many other features that, that are in place that we haven't even seen them work, have worked yet.
One of the things that you made me think of as we were talking is the design elements of the new high school, and you mentioned the 1112 campus versus the 910 campus, and one of the things that Dr. Cicada had pointed out to me early on, that you can attribute the lower incidence of discipline issues between the two schools, is the design and the silly little simple thing, widening of the hallways.
That's huge.
And so I think that there is some merit to what you're saying, for sure. There are some design elements that you guys put into this school in the first place in order to help eliminate some of the issues that you guys, that the discipline and issues that you've had to deal with in the past and security issues, so I think that's probably, those are good points, well taken.
And my child's going to be a freshman there next year, just for the record.
So. Not intimidating at all?
No. It's sad having a freshman.
It's going to be awesome.
Any more questions for Mr. Cravens or Mr. Hounshell?
We'll bring it back in September, October timeframe. We have another discussion. I think it's worth a conversation to have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so public comments, I didn't have any items for that. We're in the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Still, seconded by Ms. Stickland. Any discussion about the consent agenda?
I have a couple of questions. Policy DA fiscal responsibility.
Ms. Smith? Ms., will you come to the table, please, for policies items, please?
Dr. Ford had a question for you.
Just a couple of questions.
And we'd love for you to talk right into the microphone.
Okay, I will do that, okay.
Okay, policy DA on fiscal responsibility. We Xed out all the finance committee, so why did we remove the finance committee from that policy, and is it covered somewhere else under another policy?
That is a very good question. I'm going to actually let Paul talk to that. Because that's his area, and so if he doesn't, he doesn't mind, I'm going to defer that question to him.
Yeah. We take that, suggested taking that out, because that's, I'm not sure if that's been in since we initially adopted these policies back in June of '11, five weeks after the tornado. I think Dr. Huff wasn't, didn't we have a first reading of MSBA policies right before, and then we tiny finished it by bringing it? But Ms. Smith put out a memorandum to the board and administration, I think. But Ms. Smith put out a memorandum to the board administration, I think, a week or so ago, that kind of characterized, after the board policy committee met, what, three weeks ago or so, Jason? And discussed this whole piece of adopting a new policy authority, not authority, but a new policymaker helper that the district wanted then and now, and we've been making our best efforts to actually complete the review of all policies adopted at that date, as well as numerous changes of policies that have changed a number of times since that date, and we're still basically playing catch-up with everything that we, the board, has already adopted. Some of it has not gotten full due diligence and good thorough discussion and review for what we have adopted. And we suggested taking out some items in this week's first reading to the board, that being one, not to make a comment that anyone disagrees with it, but we didn't want the board to be any longer than we already have, to have policies approved and adopted that hadn't been fully vetted and considered and don't match up with practices. So, it's not a disagreement with anything. It is a, let's kind of start back at square one on parts of some of these policies, and then bring these items that we strike or revise, have a discussion with the board policy committee administration, and come up with what the board administration do want, not just, you know, inadvertently have them adopted, but not acted on or not fully considered.
Okay, 'cause I just remembered there was some conversation about adding some community members to different policy, different committees and stuff, so I thought that that was kind of contradictory to what we had talked about, was adding some people, and now we're taking it out, so...
Well, this, this...
We discussed this, didn't we, Jason?
Yeah. One of the things that, on policy, for example, on adding, and this is something we've been fighting since the adoption. The adoption of the MSBA policy came on the summer of the tornado, and so, we've been, so basically what's happening is it creates, there's policies out there that didn't get vetted thoroughly, and so, our practice versus what the policy says are different. And when it's in policy, then it's black and white, you have to do this, and then that puts that back on us. If it's not in policy, we can still choose to say, "We want these people represented," but once it's in policy, it is, you have to. And so, since we're not living it, some of the rationale is, "Let's make the policies close to what we're living, and then refine those and improve them," and, you know, if people say, "Hey, let's make sure we have a student on the committee, let's make sure we have these," then we can do that, and it's, and we can control that through our procedures, but in policy, it's, you know, it's kind of like, you don't have a choice.
So, the tornado happens, we adopt the MSBA version of the policy, now we're actually going back, looking through the policies to say, "What do we like? What do we not want to keep in?"
Right, okay.
And some of them, you know, MSBA sends updates, so some of the policies since then, obviously, we vetted, and others that we deal with consistently, like discipline, you know, those, but there's some of the more obscure ones that just got adopted all in one big batch, and...
Okay. Then one more question about policy DIE audits. We Xed out the requirement that we have to bid it every three years, so how will we select who does our audit now if we're no longer going to bid it? Are we gonna, is it that we're not gonna bid it every three years, or is it that we're not gonna bid it at all?
No, it's that former Dr. Ford that, we do bid it now every, I think we're on a five or seven-year cycle right now, so we are bidding it on a regular basis. As I understand it, statute does not require us to bid every three years, is that correct? And has anybody, has MSBA made a point about having to?
I didn't have that from that policy.
I don't, I didn't read that when I read that, so it's not a requirement that you do it every three years, but we like to give the auditors, by the time they get in here and get, you know, kind of acclimated to our system, and they can give us a better bid, that's why we've stretched it out to a period longer than three years. So, that's a case where MSBA's suggesting three, but it's not required, and we're not doing it for, I think, the right reasons, so we certainly wouldn't want to carry that in a policy any longer than it's already been out there.
And I want to just summarize, 'cause I kind of put Paul on the spot, because those are, those were related to finance, but just to summarize what we talked about, so, you know, everybody's clear, when we get policies from MSBA, and we got that big bunch in 2011 when we first went to the full policy services, that was right, right after the storm. Those just got adopted in bulk, literally. And so, what's happened is, as we found things that didn't quite align with the policy and the procedure, we've addressed those, and we've brought those to the board, and the board has acted on those, and we've gotten them revised. What we've committed to do now is the full review of all of our policies. Paul got out and went through several of policies that impacted the finance department, and so, many of those are finance on there, are, you know, do they actually align with our policies and practices? And then, and as Paul indicated, when we get policies from MSBA, some of it is directly driven from legislative events that, you know, we're mandated to do, our policies need to follow and be in compliance with laws and regulations. Other things are recommendations from MSBA. So, it's the recommendations that we say, "Is that going to fit? Does it, it may, you know, it may be good, and neither way is right or wrong, but we have to look at it in light of what our practices are and what best fits our district, and that's the piece that really needs to be looked at now. That's the really critical work that we need to do now, and that's really what Paul did when he went through his policies that related to finance, so those ones that are on the first reading.
And we purposely avoided anything that was statutorily driven. We knew to not strike that, but as Tina said, we were looking at things that were recommendations that we didn't see in the MSBA write-up, that they provided exactly what the rationale was for it, how many districts, you know, how much demand they had when they came up with that recommendation. So, we're gonna talk back with MSBA and ask them to explain, you know, give us some more evidence of what's some of the best rationale for some of these recommendations you're making, so we can share that amongst ourselves and decide what other recommendations we want to bring to these policies.
And one of the things, we had talked about policy committee when Linda and I was in policy committee, when they talked about putting this bid out, we didn't want to have to strap ourselves, say that we were gonna have to do this bid out every three years, so by taking it out, it limits us that we can do it six years or whatever we want to decide to contract. So, that was why, because MSBA didn't recommend it, and that's why we, Linda and I, we talked about that at policy committee, that that was a recommendation we decided we took out, yeah.
And just for clarity, going back to the finance committee, 'cause I think that's the big question, is, you know, from a transparency standpoint, are we still doing what we've always done? We still have a finance committee, striking that, those lines. It's not a, it's not a change in practice. We will have a finance committee, but it'll be procedural. This is the procedure we use to select a finance committee, which is what we've always done in years past. There's been a finance committee for as many years as I've been here, it'll be a finance committee for as long as this district operates, and we'll develop the procedures around how that finance committee's established. So, there's kind of a, some of these board policies from time to time we get them, that's got a mix of policy and procedure kind of embedded in it, and we want to try to get away from that and keep everything broad and policy-related, so we can make tweak, tweak the procedures so that every time we say, "Okay, this isn't working well," we don't have to come back to the board and go through a two or three monthly process to make a change for the better, we can make the change immediately through procedures and not policy.
One of the things that we've talked about at policy committee, some of these policies that we're looking over, and there's a lot of them right now, isn't there? That we're, you know, the wording itself may say, "You will" instead of "should" or "may" or "could," so Linda and I and Jason and Tina, I mean, it's, there's a lot of them, we've got a whole book that we're going through, so, I mean, it's a tedious thing to go through, because when we did adopt those, I remember that we just took them, and now that we're having to go through every one of them to make sure that they're correct.
And we're really looking at those words like "will" and "may." There's a big difference in "will" and "may."
Right, yes, yeah.
We, just a little history, of course, Debbie, you were living right there with us at the time. We, I think we did the first ring in April, well, we did, we did multiple rings, the first ring in April, tornado may hit, may hit, the tornado hit in May, and then we made a conscious decision to go ahead and adopt the MSBA policies, 'cause we knew we were gonna be running a hundred miles an hour. We wanted to make sure that everything we were getting was updated, accurate, and we were following the letter of the law, and we've done that. And so, there's no issues with that at all. Now, the question is, now that we have some time to take, start taking a step back, review the policies and make sure the policies that we have in place actually match some of our practices. We know we're kosher on law, because we've been following the policies that relates to any legal issues, but there is some flexibility in policies from a past practice standpoint that we need to get back to and make some tweaks and adjustments. So, going back to your comment about, you know, we've talked about bringing some community members on board at some point on some of these finance, you know, some of these various committees, and I think everybody around the table's open to that, it's just a matter of moving forward with that, so we'll get the procedure in place, and we'll be making some invitations to folks to participate in various committees.
Okay, have some other questions? Really, it's a general thing. I was looking at the number seven, number eight, the change orders at Royal Heights and Columbia, but it's really, my question's not specific to those change orders, but it's a general question that then affects budget. So, in these particular instances, like the change order at Royal Heights is, they're having to put in a different electrical panel because that electrical panel wasn't big enough or something like that. So, my question is, when these companies bid out the work to do for us, do they check those kinds of things? So, why are we absorbing that cost and not the companies? Because shouldn't they have checked those things, like soil samples and electrical panels? Shouldn't they have checked before they bid so that the expense is on them and not on us, so we don't have to end up borrowing money for things that these companies didn't do to start with?
Mike, come on in.
For example, the soil, which is one of the most prevalent ones you'll find.
Right.
We do test borings during the design portion of the projects. They'll go out to the site, and they'll do a basic geometric grid and do borings to test for soil conditions. But it's, you know, it's really, not really random, it's, it's a pattern, but you can't test the entire site. So, you know, when you go into this, you could spend the cost of a building really sampling every square inch, which isn't cost nor time effective. So, you, in this area, you get surprises. You do test bores, but you still get surprises. So, it's a, it's a trade-off. We do a fair amount of sampling, knowing that the opportunity may be there to find surprises. On the electrical, that's really not a contractor issue, that was a design issue, to be honest with you.
And is the designer's? Or is it the designer's somebody?
The designer's us. The designers work for us, so they're, when they, when there has to be a design change, then that falls back on, that's not the contractor. So, quite possibly, we should have identified this issue during design, but a certain amount of those fall through the cracks as well, and then you, you find out, once you get out there and you actually start field construction, and so, you have to correct it at that time.
And so, you'll see change orders for adds, sometimes you see change orders for deductions. It works, that cuts both ways.
Yes, we do, we, that's where the value engineering's come in, and a lot of the change orders that you've been saying, once we have a low bid contractor bidding apples to apples, and we get that contractor on board, we ask that contractor for suggestions on how we could build the billing as good as, for saving, what kind of cost can we save, and still get the same basic building, and they make suggestions. We entertain those suggestions, our engineers and architects and construction personnel discuss those, and we accept some, reject some, and it's just, how can we build an equal billing for less? Once you have those contractors on board, we utilize their expertise, basically, at that time. So, a lot of the change orders you see are actually cost deductions. Of course, we don't bring those to the board. We only bring the change orders that are adds, fifteen thousand or more, so we don't bring the ones that we save. And there's a, we've saved millions of dollars by that process.
So, sometimes, you know, architects develop detailed drawings, and we approve those drawings, and they go out and bid, and sometimes with architect designs, you know, you'll have a contractor in the field that knows of a material that provides the same quality, and I'll use, the best, one of my favorite examples is what we did over at East, which I think we've replicated at most other sites, when we had the hard, you know, I don't know the term, Mike, but our fire suppression system, the piping that came down out of the ceiling, it was a, it was a straight, you know, hard fixed pipe that was more expensive to install from a labor standpoint, as well as a cost standpoint, than a flexible tube, which provided the same, same fire protection, metal codes and standards, and so, we were able to do the install, make the change order, got a deduct. It wasn't what the architects backed, but it because those conversations are happening with the guys on the ground that deal with that material and do a lot, say, you know, this is what we've used in other projects, and we see some cost savings here, and so then we bring a change order for a deduct. Likewise, the same thing can happen, we, you know, specs are complicated, you've seen them before, and, you know, those bid documents are complicated, and so, you may go through and you, looking at everything looks good, and maybe there's a frame or a metal, piece of metal that's missing that, not a substantial change, but something that needs to be changed in order for, you know, to make things work right, and that can result in a change order that goes the other direction, where we have to spend some money to make a correction to a building plan.
Perfect example are the steps that Mike talked about coming out the back of John and Randy. The contractor built that just as it was designed, the flaw was in the design, so it wasn't the contractor's fault that the step was too narrow, it was a design issue, so, so we, the cost of that fell on us to correct that. So, we sent our guys over, we poured it, and so, it cost us about ten dollars to fix it.
Thank you, Mike.
Another question, am I the only one with questions? Okay, number eighteen, lease purchase, that information was in the board packet, and we were given it tonight, and so, I really need some explanation on what it is you're asking us to do here on this.
Okay. This is what we talked about for the last several months, there's, this particular item is not asking for authority to issue debt or accept debt at this time, it's asking to direct our professional financial advisor and our bond counsel to go out and market certificates of participation that we will bring back to the board, probably in the September timeframe, to let the board know, this is what it will cost to incur debt of eight million dollars or whatever the amount is, the cost associated for that, the interest rate associated with that, and we've been discussing this, this amount of debt to span over twenty years. This action item tonight is to, again, it's to direct the professionals that we're working with, our business partners, to go out and market these certificates, to see what kind of interest is out there, what kind of interest rate we'll have to offer to get them sold, and that's, and that, that kind of approach. The eight million dollars is arrived at, as we've talked about, and the facilities committee has met over the last year or two, directing these activities in terms of the scope of the building, rebuilding project, taking place at three different sites, at the Irving site, at the East site, and at the high school Franklin Tech site. Over the time of the projects, there have been some items that have, where we've had to expand the budget for purposes of additional square footage that we didn't have before in terms of destroyed buildings. Also, we had some mining mitigation that had to take place at Irving and at the high school, I don't think at the East campus, and in addition, there's items placed at all three locations, have to do with additional capital assets that we did not have before the storm, or higher quality capital assets. I know Mike's talked many times about a better HVAC, heat and cooling system that will, it's an A-grade item versus a, something of a lesser quality that you're gonna have to replace in ten or twelve years, so the building, rebuild project was expanded by the board for items that we didn't have before, or higher grade, or more square footage. That's what this eight million dollars, that's the source, that's the need for this eight million dollars that the, we've had to grow the budget to acquire those things, and this is our method of financing that growth.
Okay, so, then that, I have a couple of questions about that, I think. At the time, then, that we're changing the scope or expanding the scope, did the current board members think, the board members, and did they think we had money in there to cover these, you know, we'll do eight tennis courts instead of four, and those kinds of things? Did we think we had the money there to pay for that, or did we know we were gonna have to borrow money, or, like, what was the thought at that time?
I'll let the board members speak up at the, at the facilities committee meetings, but we've, we've had this discussion about additional monies being needed for these items for, my recall, for many months, but I'll let board members...
Why, why do you want to know that?
Well, I, I just...
Or you want to know the history, or what?
Yeah, because I wasn't here then, I don't know what was...
Why, why do you want to know that?
Well, I, I'm just-
Or you want to know the history, or what?
Yeah, because I wasn't here then. I don't know what was going on then.
We had, we had design teams, one of which you were part of, that your staff and staff across the district put together a plan on what they want to see happen in their classrooms. So when you look at Irving Elementary School specifically, the larger classrooms, the storage spaces, the bathrooms in each of the kindergarten classrooms, you know, the expanded scope work on that project alone costs more money. And one of the things this board was committed to and tasked Paul and I with was to go out and procure the funding that we needed to get the projects done. And so we moved forward with that. We got Irving and East and Soaring Heights completed, started moving forward with the Joplin High School project, ran into undermining issues, which was significant. And we've spent, as you know, around five point three million, I think, on undermining issues to, to deal with that. We've done some expanded scope work there to, to give our students and our staff the same courtesy that we gave the staff at Irving and Soaring Heights and East, to, to provide them the same type of opportunities for those kids as well. And we've come up with a funding mechanism that'll allow us to do that. And I feel very confident. We have a great plan in place, we've got a great team in place to make sure that all comes together. We've got new facilities everywhere, complete renovations almost everywhere. And the end result's going to be that we've got some great facilities. Our operational costs in terms of maintenance and repairs over the next number of years is going to be reduced. And so then we're going to be able to capitalize on that and be able to move some monies from cap outlay to pay for some of these additional things that we want to see happen at those, at those schools for those kids. So-
Not only that-
I don't know if that sums it up, but that's, that's mine.
Well, there were some things that were at the former school that was built in nineteen fifty-seven-
Uh-huh.
That in two thousand and fifteen are outdated and don't serve the students properly. For instance, the tennis courts. You can't host a tennis match with, you can't practice with four courts. And if you remember correctly, there were cracks in those courts and the grass was growing up because it was getting, not getting used. Why build four tennis courts that aren't going to be used? And so the board said, if we're going to do it, let's do it right. And so a lot of those things were additions that, and especially, again, those plans were drawn up so quickly because, again, decisions had to be made because most communities don't have an entire high school wiped out and have a sense of urgency to get their students back in school and in a permanent facility. And as time went on, the board looked at different plans and different things that they were replacing and different facility, things on the, at the facility, then said, okay, this is silly to build four tennis courts. We can't even utilize them. That's a waste of money. Let's go ahead and make a little bit more of an investment initially so that it is better utilized by the students as we go forward. And so that's the reason why. And yes, it is, it is an added expense, but it's, it's an investment.
And another thing, too, I think it's important that, you know, Debbie, when you or anybody else is talking to the community about the financing of this project, one of the things we didn't know, when you ask, you know, did we know, one of the things we didn't know, this was new territory for all of us, and cost escalation factors in a post-storm environment. You think about cost for subcontractors, and there's only so many subs in this area that can do the work everywhere.
Yeah, material.
And so we're having draw in Kansas City, St. Louis, Northwest Arkansas, Tulsa, Wichita. They're coming from everywhere to do work in Joplin, Missouri. And that causes costs to go up. Everybody that's doing construction right now, big construction, is experiencing that. And we had, had a kind of a rough idea of what it might be, but it succeeded that in terms of the overall additional construction costs associated with just, just materials and labor. We didn't know what the cost of steel was going to be, you know, three years ago when this disaster happened. And we got a lot of steel. We didn't know what the cost of concrete was going to be, but we put together best estimates. And again, Paul and I were tasked with, with coming up with funding to do it.
They didn't have track, we didn't have turf.
I think it just boiled down to is, in this construction project, we felt that this was our opportunity to touch every building, to update. We've made a big, huge dent in our long-term facility plan. And we didn't want to, we've had things in the past, like when we add on to Stapleton, we didn't add on enough. And we thought, I mean, I got burnt. It's like, we should have had a, almost a storm shelter type building there. That's what they needed. We missed it. And so my feelings, and this is my opinion, and this is kind of what I've heard, is we wanted to do it the right the first time. We wanted to give our community everything we could.
Yeah.
Yes, it's very expensive. We went over budget. I think this is what we're seeing right now. But to do the financing the way that Mr. Barr and his team has done this, I think that we've gotten a big bang for our buck, for something that's going to be-
It's gonna be cheaper twenty years from now to do it than it is now.
Because some, we were pulling some things earlier, and we were trying to skimp and pull and hit a number. And we said, we'll go back later and do that. And I, for one, know-
We'll never come back.
I don't ever go back and do it again.
You don't. That's right.
If you don't, I mean, we were going to have to. And so, yes, our, our facilities are very nice.
They are.
But I'm very proud of the people that were involved in that.
Yeah.
And people, and I hope that you take pride in that as well, because we, we've given them the best we can give them.
Absolutely.
And I hope that our community backs us in this financial dilemma at this point. But we have, also have some opportunities to do naming rights and different things where we can probably get that money paid back a lot quicker than twenty years from now.
Well, and that's actually where I was going with it.
Yeah, I'd really like to move forward and, and, you know, sign the paperwork or whatever. So that will be our cushion. Yes, let's get our high school done. Let's get these projects done. They are top-notch.
And I didn't believe in labor at all.
Yeah, we have, we have a loan. I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, and the other thing that-
Do I want a loan? No.
I think the other thing to point out, too, that's been incorrectly reported at a time or two, is the rumor out there that we're going to have to go back to the taxpayer and fill the void. That's not happening. It's not been a topic of conversation around this table at any point in time during this construction process. It's not been a conversation that we're going to have over the next few months. We wrap things up. We're going to put a bow on this thing. It's going to be done right. We're going to have facilities communities can be proud of. And we're not going to have to go back to the high school site for a long, long time. And we're really excited about that. And then we're, I think you were on the facilities committee when we did that, if I remember right, when we did that first run of putting together facilities plan. If I'm incorrect, correct me. But, you know, the, the two big, big areas that we've got to focus on next are West Central and Columbia. And as soon as we get moved into the new high school, we're going to start having conversations about West Central and Columbia, and where we're going to go next with those, with those two schools. So we're not done yet.
And I wouldn't mean for that point to give you labor at all. What, what I'm trying to get to is, so we're going to pay six hundred thousand dollars. Is that a year?
That's the estimate for a year.
And that's going to come out of our capital outlay.
Right.
And like you said, right now, all of our buildings, most of our billings are in good shape. West Central, Columbia needs some work. But this is twenty years down the road when none of us are going to be sitting here. And-
Andy might be.
Andy might, you might be, Mike, and Andy might still be sitting here. So, I mean, I'm not the best math person, but if, I figured that up at six thousand a year over twenty years, for eight million, we're paying back twelve million?
Well-
So am I doing that wrong? Is that fifty percent more we'll pay back?
Yeah, I mean, similar to if you, you look at your home mortgage at the beginning versus what you'll pay over twenty or thirty years, it multiplies. Yes, I think that's the correct math. Now, the bond council is going to build into these, again, when I bring this, probably at the September meeting, when we're ready to adopt this and take it on, is going to be bringing, building in, and financial advisor building in the opportunity to pay this off. I believe Greg estimated maybe at five years. It could be the, the first time we can make an advance payment or, or pay it off, or if we have additional monies that we, that we've been collecting, naming rights, or from different sources, we can make a large payments at those times. And hopefully, the goal would be, I think the board's goal would be to, as the board's already directed, we want balances back up to twenty-five percent over time, to also address this and perhaps pay this down so we don't ever get anywhere near twenty years. I believe it'd be a goal, but that'd be the board, that'd be a board goal.
Let, let me ask Cisco the board. Is there anything that we, we've done that we wouldn't want to see happen within the next twenty years on the high school site? I mean, the track, the turf, the lights.
That's what we would do.
Those are all things, concession stands, all those are things that we wanted to see on the high school site. And I can tell you, if you do the math, if you do eight million dollars worth of work today, that eight million dollars will be twenty-four million twenty years from now. And you do the math on that alone, the savings and low interest rates right now, construction, you know, even though we're in a post-construction environment, all the trends are up across, across the nation for construction costs. And it's not going to be, we got cheap money. We're there, we're on site. Let's get it done.
How much is our capital outlay budget? I mean, six hundred thousand sounds like a lot to me, but maybe-
Well, it is compared to our budget. And of course, we brought the item to hire the financial advisor for this type of work back in May and had this preliminary discussion. But it, it's, school finances complicated. And when we adopted, six hundred thousand is reflected in the original budget that the board adopted June, at the June meeting, because we took our, what's been, in recent years, we've been at one point five, one point six, one point seven million operating capital outlay, that, that being the-
Fluids.
Capital, right, the capital, the capital monies, not related to the rebuild, just to run our schools, buy computers, buses. We took that down to a number of nine hundred thousand. We reduced it to six hundred thousand for this year. And that's going to be the austere budget for the coming years, until we can get new revenue sources to replenish that budget. Because in three or four or five years, we're going to start needing to, you know, buy more equipment. We're, in the first few years of this rebuild project, we're going to benefit from not having to replace as many windows and energy efficiencies and things because of all the, all the square footage we've built. I'm not quite sure what the total square footage is, but it's an immense number of new building construction we put in this district. So the maintenance and the replacement capital assets should level off and go down as a district for some time period. So we're going to take full advantage of that and not harm any operations with what the board adopted in the original budget, reducing the annual operating, what I call the operating capital outlay budget, from one point five, one point six million down to nine hundred some thousand. And basically, that will, that's a bare bones, I mean, you know, the, the finance committee worked over this and, and dealt with it. It's, it was tough to deal with. That's a bare bones. That's really buses, technology, and some small amount for buildings and grounds to take care of the windows and doors and locks. That's absolutely nowhere you want to be in the long run. So as soon as we can grow out, grow out of that in four, years four, five, six, and seven, we need to, you know, that's going to be an intermediate goal that we need to start addressing after we get these buildings open and grow out of this very austere budget, something more reasonable than five years.
Can you feel comfortable that the new revenue sources would offset, I mean, those things that might happen, that we can't predict might happen?
My suggestion, my, the outlook is that we, if we don't want to have a nine hundred thousand dollar budget for ten years, which I think would be unreasonable, it's going to force us to do one of two things. Earmark new revenues that come in, if and when they come in. But over ten years, you would, you, it would be reasonable to assume that there's, they're going, some are going to come in. Of course, they've got to go a lot of places. Salaries and lights. But we'd have to carve out new revenue, as well as what we always do, look at existing budgets and recycle existing budgets where we have opportunities to, too. So, or some combination. That, that's just, that's just annual, that's just the annual challenge in, in budgeting. It, we're having to be talking about it in this context, but that can be said for every year of budgeting.
Just like your family budget.
Right.
You plan on having this income coming in, but then you have unexpected expenses.
No one has a crystal, right. No one has a crystal ball. The further we get away from the Great Recession, the better. We all are. The economy, especially Missouri's economy, is doing a crawl, not keeping up with the region. Makes it more difficult for Missouri. Lottery sales are leveling off or going down. So, you know, it's not a rosy economic picture out there. It's not doomsday. It has improved, but it's a, it's a real slow improvement, the slowest we've seen in some time. So we're a school district. We live within our budget, and we'll continue to do so. But that's the, that's the longer term outcome, is we all have to earmark new revenues, recycle existing expense budgets, some combination, to get the operating capital outlay budget back up to one point five, two million, where it needs to be in five to seven years.
Mr. Steele?
I got a question, but it's not to you, Paul. You could rest.
Oh.
Do we, we have a-
It's, it's still in the consent.
Awesome.
Thank you, Paul.
Come on up, Rick. We've talked about meal price increases. And would you explain to that so that people know that this is-
Yes, for the past few years, I think it was two thousand and ten, the Paid Lunch Equity Act was adopted by Congress and USDA. And basically, what that indicates is, is whatever they give us for a free and reduced meal, or a free meal, say it's three dollars for easy math, and then we get twenty-five cents for a paid meal from the government, then they want our lunch prices to be more like two seventy-five, instead of down where we had them three years ago at a dollar sixty. So we've had to increase that to keep up with the paid lunch equity price. I've also kind of, over the last several years, had thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollar increase in our fresh fruit and vegetable program. So we're offering a lot more fresh fruits and vegetables to our students. You know, we've started really trying to implement more, I'd say whole muscle or a higher quality product at our high schools, and filtering it down to our middle schools and maybe someday to our elementary students. Like a chicken nugget at a high school may be a whole muscle, where the chicken nugget at the elementary may be still kind of processed and formed. So we're just trying to live up to the USDA standards and get our paid lunch equity up to the two seventy-five and, and grow it.
How many more years have we got left to do this?
I would say we're probably be ten years away. I mean, I'm, I try to minimize it as much as we can. You know, I don't, I don't want to, you know, if we can get away from increasing it ten cents every year, I definitely will avoid that as much as I can. But in the, if I only raise a nickel, then we're going to be twenty years away from the paid lunch equity.
So this was really forced on you?
Correct. Pretty much forced on us. You know, before the Paid Lunch Equity Act was adopted, we were, we, we as the district were doing very well in our lunch program. I mean, I was here for probably right around ten years, and we've only had one lunch price increase over that ten years. And then over the last three, we've had three.
Forced on us.
Forced upon us, yes.
I think that's information that everyone should know.
Yeah, because we're trying to get those reasonable for our parents.
I realize ten cents every day, or ten cents a day, fifty cents a week. I mean, it, it definitely adds up. But I try to control that as much as I can. So.
You do a very nice job, Forrest.
Thank you.
Kudos on the improvement. You love the chicken legs.
Thank you. Again, another whole muscle item versus a chicken nugget or a chicken processed item. So it, it does filter down to the elementaries as well.
Well, just don't ever get to the point you're cutting cost point. We're, we're serving necks, chicken necks. I'm not looking at that and wings.
Gizzards.
You're a neck guy?
Are there any more questions about the consent agenda? If not, please vote.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Regular agenda items, I think that's you, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, President Sharp. The attached bill list items are for payment of materials, equipment, services, salaries, and benefits in both instructional and support areas. The administration recommends the board approve payment of bills in the amount of fourteen million, seven hundred three thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars, four cents.
So move.
Say it.
Motion by Mr. Kimbrough, second by Mr. Landis. Any questions for Mr. Barr about accounts payable? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much. Discussion items. We had a summer graduation before the work session. Like to congratulate Dakota Pilgrim and Bailey Sparling for coming tonight and wearing their caps and gowns and just making it a very nice event. I'm very happy for them. I wish them well, as well as all the other two thousand fourteen graduates.
Yeah, we're real excited. Got word this evening that Missouri Southern has their master's program in, I believe, administration, also education for teachers and administrators, both instruction.
So we're excited that they're expanding programming and a great opportunity for, for our faculty and staff. So we'll be promoting that in a big way as soon as we get the information. I've had conversations with Alan Marble the last few weeks about that. And glad to hear that's finally come to fruition. I know they've been working on that, hard on that for a long time.
Our next board meeting will be August nineteenth, I believe.
Are we going to have that? That's also the same night as all the elementary open houses.
Well, it'd be nice if I could be a dad that night. But if we, if we, I'm fine with the nineteenth, but if, you know, Randy had mentioned moving it up to Monday night. So I don't know.
Anything on the eighteen? Middle schools?
There's always something this time of year. I haven't even looked at my calendar to see. So we can send out an email tomorrow and check schedules. We may move it up a day or maybe, maybe not. So we'll see.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You need to be a dad.
And you'll be sending out information about opening day events and all sorts of nice things that happen in August. It gets to be really busy.
It'll come up usually first week.
So we'll, if you get the notices to us.
I think you've got most of the, the big items that are already out there. A lot I think you've got most of the, the big items that are already out there, a lot of things have been scheduled, but as you know, it really starts hopping here over the next couple of weeks.
So, please, if you want to volunteer to help move into our new buildings, I think there's some information on our website. We can always use all volunteers, they're going to be the week of August eleventh and the week of August eighteen. So, plus it gives you a good chance to be right there at the new high school, Franklin Tech Center. Any more discussion from any other board members? Ready for schools?
Me, too.
Make a motion, we'll just go back into closed session, do we have, we then close our motion for closed session?